All right. Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. I call the meeting to order. This meeting of the Hopkinton Select Board is being held both in person and remotely using the video conference platform Zoom. Select Board member Brian Herr will be participating remotely, and all other members of the Select Board are present for this meeting at Town Hall, room 215, 216, in person. At this time, I will ensure that Select Board member Herr, participating remotely, can hear and be heard. Brian, can you hear me?
I can hear you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. The public has the option of attending in person here at Town Hall or via Zoom using the link posted in this meeting's agenda. This meeting is being recorded, and all votes will be taken by roll-call vote. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next, we will move to public forum. Each person will have two to three minutes to speak at public forum. Please start by stating your name and address. Is there anyone present in the room that would like to speak first? One at a time.
Thank you. Sorry. I have a Zoom call at six thirty.
We're all neighbors here. Perfect. Welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Gail Ober, Seventeenth Fawn Ridge Road. In Deputy Police Chief Scott Van Ralton's letter to the Select Board on November 17th, he mentions that the HPD continues to hear concerns about their handling of the 2024 swatting incident. As a parent of a student that was part of a class that did not receive the information that there was a shelter-in-place happening and encountered the SWAT team and their guns, I found that this letter did not actually address the real concerns that myself and many others in our town have. Van Ralton points out that as part of an after-action review, the HPD reached out to have the case reviewed by an FBI special agent who is a national expert in hoax bomb threats and swatting investigations. Van Ralton shared that the special agent confirmed that the officers and dispatchers acted precisely in line with federal best practices. I think it is great that the HPD did an after-action review, especially given that they were under a lot of scrutiny for how this swatting incident was handled. But it is my opinion that what Van Ralton's response fails to do is to reassure the Select Board and the public that the HPD has a robust emergency response plan in place for all our schools in regards to school shooting and swatting incidents. This type of plan would include a training session on most current thinking and best practices because it is, after all, our police department's responsibility to take the lead on these matters. This emergency response plan would mean that each school and their staff have been trained and has a plan in place, signed off by the HPD. Did they have a national expert evaluate that? I can tell you the answer is no. And how I know this is that I did speak with Brian LeBlanc. He is the FBI special agent that Chief Joseph Bennett reached out to. Brian took the time to talk through many things with me, and Van Ralton is right. Brian LeBlanc is a national expert in hoax bomb threats and swatting investigations, who would be an amazing resource for our community. Brian said he would be happy to work with the town of Hopkinton, the HPD, the HFD, school administration, staff, parents, and anyone else who would like to be a part and interested in a training plan and attending a training session on best practices for us for school shooting and swatting incidents. Each of you should ask yourself, why wouldn't our police chief Joe Bennett or Deputy Police Chief Scott Van Ralton, now Acting Chief, take the extra step to make this happen? You know, the one that would keep our kids and our community safe? FBI Special Agent Brian LeBlanc gave me all his contact information, and, as I stated, he could not have been more helpful and informative. I will make sure to forward Brian's information to our amazing Superintendent of Schools, who I know is committed and always working hard to make our schools a safer and better place for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to come up next?
Don Sutherland, 205 Winter Street, Chair of the Environmental Working Group, the Hopkinton Sustainable Green Committee. I'm here tonight to also confirm with the board that you received our letter. I think we sent you a letter on the 11th. So in regards to that, the Hopkinton Sustainable Green Committee urges the board to reject the $55,000 requested expanded use of several hundred gallons of toxic herbicides to be administered by DPW in Lake Maspinock in 2026 as physically, fiscally, and environmentally irresponsible. This request by the Lake Maspinock Weed Management and Control Advisory Group feeds a herbicide treadmill, which doesn't manage plant life in the long term, and requires repeated renewal applications of more and more toxic chemicals. As we stated in our letter, the Lake Maspinock Weed Management and Control Advisory Board is requesting in their 1024 letter of correspondence to the board to approve $55,000 for the expanded use of these several hundred gallons of toxic lake herbicides. And at their 10-2 meeting, which I attended with another member, they reviewed the effectiveness of the 2024 application of several hundred gallons of toxic herbicide chemicals and the drawdown. They found only more plant growth than before in the targeted treated areas. Targeted killed plants were replaced by other plant species. Their solution: to repeat the process in 2026 in more areas of the lake, all without an environmental impact assessment of what these chemicals are doing to the life forms of the lake. In the letter, it says that the letter states that "the science and studies on the use of toxic chemical herbicides clearly shows plants are only mitigated in the short term and will return." Federal and state government environmental agencies also warn nutrients released from killed plants cause more future growth, toxic algal blooms, and more applications to herbicides. This is known as the herbicide treadmill. The use of toxic herbicides designed to kill unwanted plant life will also harm beneficial aquatic plant habitats, invertebrate and vertebrate aquatic life. Hopkinton Sustainable Green Committee opposes the unsustainable, ecologically harmful use of toxic chemical herbicides in Lake Maspinock as fiscally and environmentally irresponsible. As I've said, the committee supports a non-toxic, long-term, holistic plan incorporating limiting watershed nutrient loading, barrier plants, bentic barriers, drawdown, hand-pulling, and mechanical plant management, all as detailed in the Lake Maspinock Aquatic Vegetation Control and Watershed Management Plan of June 2021. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Carol Essler, 16 Oakhurst Road, speaking to the same issue and again against funding the poison going into Lake Maspinock. As Don said, the weeds grow back in a year, two at most. They're just back. As many people have said, nature abhors a vacuum. You kill the weeds, a new one comes in, they come back. I've lived on the lake for 40 years, and the weeds change which weed comes up, yes, but there's always weeds and they come back. So $55,000, if you stretch that out over 10 years, that's a lot of money for nothing permanent. And there are things that did not go into the toolbox when it was first presented to CONCOM that we could then afford and use, things such as diver-assisted suction harvesting, small weed harvesters, and aeration, things that might actually change the sediment in the bottom and bring some of that up and get some of the nutrients out and cause the weed problem to gradually and naturally get better. Diquat, which is the main herbicide that went in the lake, is banned in dozens of countries worldwide due to health concerns. And although it's not fully scientifically proven, there are concerns, and our current EPA is not to be trusted. Closer to home, I spoke with a friend on CONCOM in the town of Concord, and they have banned the diquat and related and similar chemicals because if we ban diquat, there'll be another one very similar, and it's just whack-a-mole with these chemicals. I was there in 2015 when the town voted down using toxic chemicals in the lake, when the Citizens Input Group was formed and as a counter to the opposition. And they've always really kind of leaned herbicide, and it's the wrong thing fiscally. It's the wrong thing for the lake environment. It's the wrong thing for our health. It's the wrong thing for our children, and I urge you not to approve this money. It's irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Kaiser, 16 Oakhurst Road. I'll be brief. Same issue. I have an intimate relationship with the lake. I swim every day. The problem is that there's muck, sediment on the bottom that's full of nutrients, and if that doesn't get taken care of, which I know we probably can't afford to dredge the lake, the problem's just going to continue. And if we keep adding poisons to it, then if we ever get the money to do a wet dredge or even a dry dredge, those sediments will be toxic, and then we'll have another problem and another big expense. The other thing that I'm worried about, and I will take this up with CONCOM, is that we have a lot more houses now using commercial fertilizers in the buffer zone. Nobody should be spreading phosphorus nitrogen within the buffer zone of the lake or even in the bigger lake neighborhood, but at least within the buffer zone. That should be stopped. And we've seen other lakes, like Hopkinton State Park, Lake Winnipesaukee, and a lake just north of Winnipesaukee in the Charles River Basin, have blooms of cyanobacteria, which can make the water toxic, can kill your dog, make your dog sick. And if it's toxic enough, you can't even kayak in the water because it gets into the air, and now you've got neurotoxins floating in the air. I think if we, to get the CONCOM to stop allowing the fertilizers within the buffer zone, we'd have a better chance of not having a cyanobacteria. And as a swimmer, that concerns me more than the weeds. I swim in the weeds. They're fine. It's like walking in a meadow. It's beautiful. It's nice. You know, I can't use a couple of my boats because of the weeds, but it's not as scary an issue as the cyanobacteria. I think aeration and some other things might be helpful. I would like to see the Weed Management Committee. I've been disappointed there's not been a lymnologist at the last meetings. There used to be a guy who was regularly at those meetings. They've hired a new team, I think, but to not have someone with a science base to ask questions to about alternatives and what the collateral damage is from putting diquat and endritol in the lake year after year, we're kind of running blind here, and I really think we need some better and more scientific information about what the long-term effects of what we're doing and alternatives. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Sabine St. Pierre, One Woody Island. I wasn't planning on talking as the LMPA president, but I figured since that topic just came up, I'm just going to quickly say a couple of things. We have been doing a lot of education with our membership on fertilizers, and we've called a couple of different companies. TruGreen is the most-used company, it seems, around the lake. And, you know, by law, they are required to use non-phosphorus fertilizers within a certain buffer zone of the waterfront. So people are aware of that, and we're doing our due diligence on trying to educate people with that. As far as the new lymnologist, you know, there's a budgetary issue. They can't come to every single meeting that we have. They are amazing. Our last lymnologist, who was also awesome, Dave Mitchell, he would survey 12 points. They surveyed 75. We've added in the area across from the north basin where we have a lot of issues. We've added in the area across from that because it filters in. So we're also doing, the Board of Health is going to be testing the sediment because we do know sediment is an issue. So I understand the concerns, but we are trying to make sure that we cover all those bases. And the CIG, for the last 10 years, they've researched, and they're a volunteer group, and they've spent countless hours. They do not make that decision about herbicides lightly at all. So I just want you to understand as a board that there has been a lot of time and effort over the last 10 years in looking at all the possible options that they have, and herbicides has always been a last resort. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Karen Crum, 12 Joseph Road. Two weeks ago, Deputy Police Chief Scott Van Ralton was asked questions relating to the closely-followed Small Town Secrets Hopkinton edition coverage. He said he would research the questions raised by investigative reporter Ryan Cath, along with those raised by residents, and would present his findings to the Select Board. In the capacity of Acting Police Chief, he reported his findings. There's a few things I would like to point out about them. First, the questions he was researching were complaints about how information in a case was handled by the police chief. So I find it unorthodox that the Deputy Police Chief would investigate how the police chief, his own boss, the one who could someday suggest a promotion for him, handled anything in this matter. Acting Police Chief Scott Van Ralton then goes on to share that the January 12th, 2023 incident involving Mr. Sismanis was properly documented in the Hopkinton Police Department's internal log as required by the law. He tells you all the things that are withheld from the public log. He repeats it a few different ways, and ironically states how important it is to preserve the privacy of victims of certain events, like sexual assaults, rapes, domestic violence. Does he recall that this is the exact mass general law his police chief was accused of violating in January of 2024 in another case, and that Hopkinton will be sued because of that? Is Van Ralton seriously making such a strong point in his public report that can and will be used by the woman suing over this? Again, Scott Van Ralton goes on to continue talking about the strict penalties of violating this law, and they had no choice but to remove the incident from the police log. Is this really what anyone is asking about? We are not on Small Town Secrets because of the ins and outs of our police department's log-keeping. Let's all be reminded, the issue is that the police chief chose to sign off acknowledging he had zero concerns on issuing a license for Sismanis to own and operate his pizza business in Hopkinton. No law would have been broken by not signing off on this. You just leave it blank, add a simple comment saying you're choosing not to sign off on this. It's so simple that I actually cannot believe we are still talking about it and redoing our own laws because of it. In my opinion, this was not a sincere letter to the community on how they're going to stay on top of things about the safety of our town. Never mentioned. The fact that he sends accolades to his department on behalf of Sismanis being indicted, that was because of a brave woman that came forward. The last thing I'll say, I think this report, it's condescending to the public, to the residents. To say that we deeply regret the false narrative that has emerged and stemming from a small group of residents misunderstanding these complex issues, well, they were clearly effective. Here we are. In my opinion, this letter is such a clear example of the toxicity within our police department's leadership and why we desperately need new leaders in charge of our town's safety. This is not a letter written by anyone who would be a leader. Thank you.
Sorry, Joe. Welcome, Ed.
Thank you. Ed Harrow, 8 Spring Lane, Member of the Conservation Commission, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission, speaking as a citizen. I wish to point out some good things. One, that we had a pair of nested, overhanging widow-making trees over the Gatehouse Trail in Reed Park, and that John Ritz and Chuck Doci took it upon themselves to remove them so that that hazard is gone. Secondly, we had an accident in the Nation subdivision with a truck that hit a tree, and the trailer rolled over and dumped tons of asphalt, millings, and things like that into a wetland, and the Nations took it upon themselves with no input, no oversight, to proactively deal with it, as opposed to others in this town who get called before CONCOM with great regularity. I speak for myself and not for CONCOM. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Who would like to speak next?
Can I come up a second time? Is that okay?
It's up to you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Sabine St. Pierre, One Woody Island. As just mentioned, the small groups. I know there's been a small group demanding the truth, but I don't understand why it's such a small group. Call me naive, but shouldn't we all want the truth, no matter what side we're on? Don't just jump on a bandwagon or make a decision or comment without knowing the facts. If I don't know the facts, I go look for them. I pay attention, I ask questions, I attend meetings. It's time-consuming, but being an active contributing community member and wanting the best for your town means being proactive, and it takes courage. You just can't rely on what others think or believe or what they want you to believe. That's the easy way out, and you run the risk of being misinformed. It takes courage to question authority, like the letter that was just referenced. A lot of people just took it for what it was and didn't read between the lines and look into it deeper. It takes courage to request documentation. These are our rights as citizens. Now, I understand not everyone has that courage, but those that do are often criticized. So while some say these small groups of concerted citizens need to put down their pitchforks, get a job, or whatever other insults are out there, if you think what they are doing is so wrong, then get the courage and go out there and gather the facts of your own and prove them wrong, not just hearsay. And it's human instinct, I think, when someone raises a concern, that you should address the concern. And this group has expressed concerns, and individuals on the board have expressed concerns. In 2018, you had an executive session with Sismanis in which a board member expressed some grave concerns, but they were not looked into deeper. In February 2024, Muriel shared her concerns about the chief of police and if he was meeting his goals. That was not looked into further, and many of those concerns and goals, we still don't think are met. A few weeks back, Matt Kizner questioned, why are we rushing the process for Crest and Co. to get their VIC license, especially everything given that was happening with Hiller's? Yet he was outvoted four to one, and you pushed it forward. And sure enough, he opened his doors without having all his signatures. So I'm not only concerned about the Select Board not taking a pause to think about the concerns of just one board member, but it's also the community. They want to chastise the small groups of people that are actually paying attention and doing their due diligence. So everyone needs to take a look at themselves. Don't rely on what's out there on Facebook and letters to the editor and conversations with your friends. If they start with, well, I heard, then you're not informed.
Thank you. Would you like to speak? Welcome.
Good evening. Jeff Doherty, Three Angels Way. I'm here as a taxpayer, as a resident, for over 35 years in the town. My concern is that someone that came from another town, who isn't a taxpayer, who isn't a resident, created a firestorm, negative publicity, ran a business out of town, took a business away from a family, and I don't think that the board should spend their time or their money entertaining a non-resident of the town in her personal vendetta against somebody. The Commonwealth has laws that were adjudicated. If that person is not happy with the way the sentence came down, then their beef is not with the town of Hopkinton. It's with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the State House. It changed the law if you don't like it. But I just don't think it's fair to the taxpayers of this town or to your board to spend time entertaining somebody who has a personal vendetta. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Alyssa McGinty. I work at 35 Parkwood Drive. Every day, hundreds of people come into this town as talent for your businesses, teachers for your schools, patients for your doctors, children for your camps, competitors for your sports teams, volunteers for your organizations, and patrons for your shops and restaurants. And in doing so, these people who come to work, learn, volunteer, and shop become an inextricable part of the town's fabric. In fact, I'm sure you would acknowledge that these out-of-towners are indisputably critical for the town's economic well-being. For me personally, Hopkinton is a place where for 17 years, I've taken my children for T-ball and art classes, where they have attended camps and held their first job, where my family has tirelessly volunteered to raise money, and where I rent office space and work. Funnily enough, no one seems to complain I'm from out of town when they're collecting my money. So I have no patience for those who argue that non-residents have no business asking questions. To me, that's nothing more than a cowardly argument some people use to justify keeping their own heads in the sand. There are some other out-of-towners, I think, that need to be acknowledged as well. The women and girls who came into town like me to work, assuming that they would be safe, but unlike me, found themselves literally at the hands of a predator. What's tragic is that some of their stories could have been avoided altogether if action had been taken by the police. Several weeks ago, a dangerous dog was the subject of conversation in these meetings. In response to that situation, the animal control officer discussed the thorough and preventative action taken to prevent any future incidents with the dog. But unlike animal control, who sought out all available remedies in order to ensure public safety, the HPD did not do the same to protect the community from a serial sex offender. In fact, just the opposite. In 2018 and 2021, the HPD partnered with Hiller's Pizza and Sismanis in their various fundraising campaigns, and they let Sismanis expand these campaigns by accepting meaningful donations from him outside of the funds raised directly from the original campaigns. These partnerships could only signal to Sismanis that his behavior could be cast aside and signal to the public that Sismanis was an upstanding citizen running a perfectly safe business. How did they signal this? By sending the public directly in to Hiller's Pizza to participate in the fundraising campaign. Imagine if, rather than putting measures in place to restrain Thor, animal control had instead told people that he was safe and that they should just go over and give him a nice pet. Absurd? It absolutely is. It is absurd that the animal control is more proactive with respect to public safety than the police, that women can't know in this town that the town has put at least as much thought and effort into protecting them from a sex predator as is being done to protect them from a dog. While there are laws in place that prevent unsolicited disclosure of Level 2 sex offenders, that's not the full story. There's a reason the law makes otherwise confidential information available, because information- business. How did they signal this? By sending the public directly in to Hiller's Pizza to participate in the fundraising campaign. Imagine if rather than putting measures in place to restrain Thor, animal control had instead told people that he was safe, and that they should just go over and give him a nice pet. Absurd? It absolutely is. It is absurd that the animal control is more proactive with respect to public safety than the police, that women can't know in this town that the town has put at least as much thought and effort into protecting them from a sex predator as is being done to protect them from a dog. While there are laws in place that prevent unsolicited disclosure of Level 2 sex offenders, that's not the full story. There's a reason the law makes otherwise confidential information available, because information can prove invaluable to prevent future crimes. Year after year, the police signed off on their vic licenses, not saying a word, when they could have said something, such as, "We have strong reservations about your allowance of this license, and we remain available to answer your questions." What makes a situation more egregious is this: The police knew that Sismanis's business was an integral part of his crime pattern, that he used the business to cultivate his pool of prey, and yet did nothing to stop him from continuing.
Thank you. Would you like to speak next?
Good evening. My name is Sarah McCabe. I live just over the town line in Westboro, and the reason that I'm here is I am the CEO of a large human service organization that has provided social services across Massachusetts for nearly 50 years. One of our core programs is sexual assault prevention and rape crisis support. Many of our clients come from Hopkinton. You entrust me to take care of the children of this town. With over 23 years of experience working with victims of survivors, I was deeply troubled by the recent letter from the Hopkinton Police Deputy Chief that was published in The Independent on November 14th. The letter defended the department's lack of action regarding a known Level 2 sex offender, citing Massachusetts general law as justification. But this explanation was misleading. While the law prohibits law enforcement from actively disseminating information about Level 2 sex offenders, such as posting photos online or in public spaces, it does not prevent them from sharing information when circumstances warrant it. When the Select Board questioned the police about Mr. Sismanis's permit to operate a pizza shop, that was an appropriate moment for disclosure. Instead, the permit was approved year after year with multiple missed opportunities to raise concerns. This is not just a procedural failure, it is a betrayal of public trust. The community relies on law enforcement to act transparently and to prioritize public safety. When those in power choose silence over action, they undermine the very foundation of trust that a community is built upon. The letter also referenced laws protecting the privacy of arrest records, but these laws exist to protect victims, not offenders. It is not unreasonable to ask why the department seemed more focused on safeguarding the rights of a convicted sex offender than on protecting the community. This approach sends a dangerous message that those in power may remain silent and that transparency is discouraged. Such actions betray public trust and embolden offenders. While they commended the investigators who responded to the 2023 case, the larger issue remains: the silence and inaction of those who could have prevented harm. In my experience, it is this silence and complicity that makes healing so much harder for survivors. Nationally, experts estimate that 25% to 35% of sexual assaults go unreported, and reporting rates are closely tied to the relationship between local law enforcement and their community. So consider what this means for the residents of Hopkinton. When a senior law enforcement official expresses regret only for a false narrative about the department's actions and not for the harm suffered by a victim, it reveals deeply misplaced priorities. I urge the police and town officials to rebuild trust and to repair the harm that has been done. The safety of this community depends on it.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, John Liskowski, 50 Long Drive, Ashland. Good evening, and before I began, I wanted to address another letter that was published today that some say our concerns amount to conspiracy theory and they were angry mob ignoring the law. But let me be clear: We're not claiming any conspiracy. We are documenting a pattern of discretionary inaction. We're not demanding the impossible. We're asking why legally permissible warnings were never given. And we get it, the cost of speaking out is high. The cost of silence is higher. Even our critics acknowledge that Chief Bennett is, quote, "a poor manager," and there are, quote, "plenty of other reasons to relieve him of command." On that, we totally agree. So the question tonight is, what will you do about decades of management failures that put children at foreseeable risk? For more than 20 years, the town and its police command have failed to take action that could have prevented further harm, even as women and teens were assaulted in Hopkinton. And these are the facts as they appear in public records, court documents, and the board's own minutes. Deputy Chief Van Rowton has interpreted the law in a way that conceals the Hopkinton Police discretion. The truth is simple: HPD always had the authority and the opportunity to warn the community without violating any laws, and they chose not to. Some claim the Select Board had no legal requirement to investigate, and that's correct, but it's irrelevant. The question is not what was required, the question is what was permitted and prudent. The Massachusetts law explicitly allows police to provide general, non-confidential public safety recommendations to licensing authorities. Police departments across the Commonwealth do this every day, recommending approval or denial, flagging concerns, or advising closure scrutiny. Lack of legal mandate does not equal the absence of legal authority, it equals the presence of discretion, and discretion repeatedly ignored in the face of known risks is a management failure with unforeseeable consequences. For years, the town's licensing process provided a section for the police to comment on applicants for public safety purposes. Yet for Petro Sismanis at 77 West Main Street, the HPD said nothing. Why? Why? Police could have simply said, "We have public safety concerns. We recommend denial." These are routine, legally permitted steps across Massachusetts, and they were ignored. In fact, on December 5, 2023, Deputy Chief Van Rowton flagged concerns about Cornell's public vic license renewal during a Select Board meeting, stating, "We have concerns, noise complaints, parking issues, public safety concerns. We recommend the board consider conditions or a closer review of the renewal." He took discretion for that one. Van Rowton flagged concerns about noise complaints and parking issues for a vic license renewal, but when it comes to a Level 2 sex offender applying for a license, it's silence? Van Rowton clearly knew how legally alert the Select Board, he chose not to for Sismanis. And we just want to know why. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beth Malloy, 190 Lumber Street, Hopkinton. The silence started in 1998 at 77 West Main Street, the site of the first sexual assault by Petro Sismanis. Sismanis was charged with rape and pled guilty to a lesser charge, becoming a 20-plus-year registered Level 2 sex offender. All Level 2 sex offenders are monitored regularly by police. There is no doubt the Hopkinton Command Staff knew Sismanis's status, yet he was allowed to remain in the community without intervention for decades. In 2016, the officer reviewing Sismanis's application was Jay Porter. Porter stated, "We had no prior issues with this applicant." Nine years later, Porter himself was convicted of sexually assaulting a 15-year-old and sentenced to seven years in prison. The tragic irony is clear: The person responsible for flagging public safety concerns was himself, a predator, who saw nothing wrong with another predator operating in our community. By 2023, Sismanis was a pillar of the community, until one brave young woman refused to be silenced. In January 2023, Sismanis assaulted a 16-year-old and attempted to prevent his victim and her mother from leaving the parking lot. The jury found him guilty of sexual assault and two counts of witness intimidation in 15 minutes. Even after his arrest in the 2023, the police made no comment on Sismanis's license renewal, none. Brian Herr and Alain Lazarus were in that 2018 executive session. They knew about his past and his recent history and said nothing. I want to know why. Thank you.
Thank you.
The answer cannot be the law didn't require it. The law also didn't require the police to shake hands at community events or pose for photos. Yet, in 2018, that's exactly what the HPD did with a Level 2 sex offender. In 2018, the HPD publicly partnered with Sismanis at fundraising events, posting a video, sending families to Hiller's to perch fundraising patches. Sismanis posed with Chief Bennett and 10 other officers in front of the police station for a photo opportunity, photos that were in local newspapers and social media, all a part of Sismanis's plan to create the perfect reputation as a safe employer. During this time, Sismanis regularly posted on Facebook pictures of youth teams and children's birthdays. The police who were monitoring him did nothing. They exercised discretion to build his reputation. They could have exercised discretion to warn the community. They chose the former. Even while facing trial and assaulting a minor, Sismanis's license was renewed in 2023 and 2024. Chief Bennett raised no objections, not once, but twice, in 2023 and 2024, and we want to know why. The silence didn't just happen, it created a dangerous environment where harm was entirely predictable, and it did. In January of 2023, Sismanis sexually assaulted a 16-year-old in Hiller's Pizza at 77 West Main Street. This tragedy occurred in an environment where the police had authority, the process, and opportunity to flag risks to the Select Board, but they chose silence. They had a chance to protect the community, they had a chance to protect our kids, they had a chance to act, and they didn't. When those we trust with public safety stay silent, it sends a chilling message to predators: You're untouchable, and tells victims, you're on your own. Hopkinton Police cannot claim they were legally prohibited from flagging public safety concerns. They were asked to provide input. They had discretion, and they chose not to. That choice put the public and our kids at risk for decades. Tonight, some may argue that what we're demanding is impossible, that we're a conspiracy theorist with pitchforks. We are none of those things. We are parents with documented evidence asking why discretionary authority to protect our children was ignored for decades. This is not about technical compliance, this is about leadership, it's about judgment, it's about foreseeable harm that could have been prevented, and it's about accountability. We demand removal, immediate removal, of Chief Joe Bennett pending an independent investigation. You have the power to act tonight. The cameras are here, the reporters are here, the community is watching, but more importantly, Select Board, the victims are watching, the ones that you failed to protect, and also the ones that you still can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Quickly, before we move on, I'm getting some texts that people are having issues either connecting to the Zoom or getting disconnected from the Zoom. Can I maybe just get some confirmation that things are functioning as they should and we're not seeing bouncing?
We have 29 people on Zoom, plus the five panelists.
Okay. So if you're trying to get on, please keep trying, know that we are listening.
Welcome.
Welcome. Patrick O'Brien, 13 Ray Street. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Humbug. I am hearing that beautiful town climate possibly can be dark over the Christmas season. Now, I appreciate the town's effort, looking at all our departments, trying to streamline their budgets, but Christmas lights at under $10,000, to me, seems like something that we can find somewhere to do it. Recently, I have read that some residents and some businesses, including the Chamber of Commerce, wants to step up and pay for that. And I can understand Parks and Rec being reluctant to jump on acceptance solicitations from outside, and they need the approval of their board and this board. So I urge this board to work with the Parks and Rec, and if you can't find the $10,000 in the town's budget, to maybe work with outside people to fund that, because the town does look beautiful at Christmas time with the common all lit up, and I'd really hate to see that not happen. I also would hate to see you all get coal in your stockings this year, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room for public forum? Amy, can you check if anyone's got a hand raised online?
There are no hands raised on Zoom. Looks like a lot of people here for the marathon bibs, though.
Okay.
Now that we're just ready to be done, I decided to speak. I'm Amy Groves, 2 College Street. I just wanted to ask whether the Select Board, I would love for you to continue the investigation about whether additional Corey or Sory checks might be in order and possible, so I know you're doing that, so thank you. I would also like to find out from Town Council, I would love to hear from Town Council, let him weigh in, or them weigh in, on these mass general laws that have been cited and what the actual legal opinion is. And I would also like to know if Town Council could even help us to, or perhaps James Arena DeRosa could help us to know whether we can tighten up some Massachusetts legislation in this area, because I think that those would be things that anybody could agree on, regardless of whether they're being called pitchforkers or not. I think that that would really help, you know, if I were one of the survivors, one of the victims, I would feel really, really good about knowing that some real action was going to be taken on the state level.
Thank you. If there is no one else, I think...
Sorry for the car. I was in the view of helping Timmy pull a deer out today, actually, two deer. Steve Snow, 78 Pine Island Road. So, you guys all know why I've been here. I've been here since Tim Brennan was fired for absolutely no reason, trying to protect a victim. If you had to get rid of Joe Bennett, when you had the perfect opportunity to do it, when his review was quickly shut down by Shahadul, showing his inefficiency and his unwilling to do his job properly, we probably wouldn't be in this. But right now, it appears that Chief Bennett is probably already checked out, and you might as well just suspend him with pay, and pay the guy off for seven months until he rides off into the sunset, get a chief, a board to put together to interview for a new chief, and I don't think Scott Van Rowton's the one to do it. The command staff at Hopkinton PD is not doing their job. Sorry. You got a man promoted to lieutenant by the woman that he arrested for OUI. I mean, a little conflict there, eh? Just do the job. I'm not going away. Tim has never received any justice. His life's in a ruin because of the actions of the board, the Select Board, and the chief, and his command staff. And that's my charge: Defend them. The victim has got justice. She'll never be whole, but she's got justice. Her perpetrator's serving seven years in a day, and he's not in Massachusetts anymore, he's in Maine, because he was going to get killed in Massachusetts. That's what prisoners do, because they all have children, too. The activism with the people from Ashland that we've sort of paired beside, I'm sorry. If in my activism to help Tim Brennan and the victim of John Porter, we help other children in town, that's a bonus, that's friggin' positive. That's all I care. Just do positive things. Get this to go away by fixing it. You guys kicked the can too long. Don't kick the can no more. Get it done. Thank you.
Anyone else for public forum? She checked, there was no hands raised.
No one, no raised hands.
All right, so we're going to move on. So for tonight, like, we put this thing on here that we're going to... So for tonight, like, we put this thing on here that we're going to try using in the future. I think last week especially, and as everyone knows with public forum, the board cannot legally respond to what is said at our meeting, right? It's against open meeting law. So we wanted to discuss this tonight and then use it as a, you know, tool in the future. I think one of the things that was brought up specifically was, you know, was mentioned tonight, that, again, the swatting incident. You know, a resident felt like, you know, they'd sent a letter, it wasn't followed up on, and, you know, from my view, I think a lot of these things that get brought up, they'll get addressed in future meetings, albeit indirectly. They're, you know, they get brought up as other parts of agenda items, and so this, I'm hoping, you know, and again, this is, we wanted to discuss it publicly tonight and then kind of enact this going forward, especially with the amount of attendance that we have at public forum. But we're hoping that this will be more of a direct response to what people are saying in public forum, albeit it's not perfect. I don't even, I don't even know if it's a great idea, but in the spirit of like transparency and communication, we're going to try-- no, please, no, we're just, again, we're just kind of laying the groundwork for something that we're going to try moving forward. So I think as you see, you know, almost all of us take notes throughout public forum, you know, we do value that input, and so moving forward, I think we're going to try and, you know, we'll never be able to respond to every single thing that gets brought up, but we're going to try to, and in a more direct way. So if people can just kind of, like, hang in there, we do appreciate hearing from everyone. The board has never, you know, pushed back on this idea. Public forum is, it's actually not something that's mandatory as part of open meeting, but we think as a board that it's the right way to kind of, you know, manage the town and connect with the residents. So moving forward, we will, you know, look at previous meetings, what had been brought up, and, you know, the town hall will work in the background to kind of come up with answers, that people feel they're answered more directly. So I don't really have anything more to say tonight, but I thought that was just, we hear you, we want to respond more. So as we continue to work through this, I hope people see a difference. Ken, quickly? Yep, the board can share thoughts.
So I think you summed it up nicely. I'm going to make my own ass to all of you, and believe it or not, it's going to be strictly about decorum. I know, me of all people. Folks, it is really, really hard to come up and speak in public, and that's when everybody is in support of what you're going to say. Many of the issues here were difficult for people to bring up. There were people on both sides of them here. It is easy for many people, myself very much included, to find their voice. It is hard for so many more. I can understand your enthusiasm and your excitement. Every time you clap, there is someone else on another topic, just like this one, who decides they're too scared to come to this forum. I would ask that you try and restrain that excitement, have the conversation in the background, clap at the end if you truly must, but know that you are trying to promote voices, and in expressing your joy, you are silencing some, too.
Any other thoughts from the board?
Yeah, nothing more to add. I think we are all on the same page, and that's how we want to interact and hear from our residents all the time, so please do come and do open your voices so we can hear to you. And as Mr. Chair mentioned, this would be a good mechanism to give our feedback time to time, and please bear with the time gap a little bit, and also some of the constraints we have procedurally that we cannot make it interactive, but I think this would be a good addition and a good way to communicate and help us align and move forward together.
Yeah, just, I agree that it's a good idea to start sharing more information and response, and we can't respond right away, but if we can respond the following week or the next meeting, that would be good. And a lot of these, we do have to schedule a special meeting about, and we have a busy schedule, so it's not, it can't always be the next meeting, but it can be set for a future meeting.
All right. So again, thank you, everyone, for your input. We're going to, in the sake of time, we're going to move on. So next, we have, the Select Board will distribute marathon invitational entries to qualified applicants for the 2026 Boston Marathon in accordance with its adopted policy. Elaine, would you like to introduce this one? You know, it's kind of, we do this every year, but obviously, we get more and more applicants, and we can't, we can't always fit the number of requests for bibs, so.
Correct. So this year, the town was fortunate to receive 50 invitational entries from the BAA to be awarded to charitable organizations, and I just want to stress that the focus is on funding for charity, and that's the purpose of the program. So we solicited applications, and we received a total of six town departments and committees applying for a total of 12 entries, and we received applications from 44 nonprofit organizations seeking a total of 67 entries, and there are 50 entries to go around. So staff reviewed the requests and have made a recommendation, and the goal is to give as many charitable organizations as possible an entry. So to that end, we were looking at the numbers, and we're very grateful that the Hopkinton Marathon Committee agreed to give up one of their requested entries, so it's greatly appreciated, that offer from them. They do a lot of work for the town for the marathon. They're our primary on-the-ground logistics people, not the public safety part, but the other part of the marathon, and they do an awful lot of volunteer work. So it's very nice of them to agree to give up one of their requests if needed. So when, looking at the numbers, we have recommended that the Harpington Marathon Committee receive four entries, that the Veteran Celebration Committee receive an entry, that the High School BPA Robotics receive an entry, and that the Senior and Disabled Tax Relief Committee receive an entry. And then the remaining entries, there is one more organization than there are remaining entries, so since there are two submitted on behalf of the library, we're suggesting a random draw of those, between those two organizations that support the library and fund one of those, in an effort to give as many as possible to charitable organizations.
Thank you, Elaine. So just to be clear, you know, we have, you know, what is it, 44 different entities? And the proposed distribution would be, you know, you know, we're actually shrinking some of the town department ones, like the Marathon Committee. You know, thank you for the Marathon Committee for helping work, because I know a lot of these organizations, especially some of the smaller ones in town, this is their main fundraising effort. So it's really great that we, looks like we just have enough. And so just to be clear, the two were the Hopkin Public Library Foundation and the Hopkin Public Library Friends, right, for the, kind of, the last one. And then the remaining applicants will get one, one bib each.
I did want to note that there is, so Project Just Because and the Hopkin Food Pantry are associated with each other, but we felt this is a time when we do want to support food resources.
Yep, absolutely. So, so comments from the board. I think the recommendation for distribution makes sense to me, similar in what we, in line with what we did last year. It makes sure everyone gets, you know, something, and then, I mean, I'll hear the board first before we do, you know, the draw for the two library.
Yeah, I mean, it's always easier when we have just about the same number of requests as we have numbers, but I think this is a good recommendation for the distribution. Food insecurity is a problem right now, so I understand the two, Project Just Because and the Food Pantry, and, yeah. And I think the library needed more funds when they were doing the big building projects, so hopefully for this year, the library could just have the one, and it'll be okay. So I'm comfortable with the staff recommendation.
Okay. What are the criteria?
It's in the policy that the board adopted at the last meeting, which is in the packet.
So I flipped there and didn't see it easily, so my apologies. I'm honestly pretty uncomfortable with the notion of painting with what I kind of view here as a one-size-fits-all brush. While there are 44 unique nonprofits here, not all of them are doing equivalent work, nor is all of the work being suggested by them of equivalent derivative value to the community. I'm really uncomfortable with the notion that I'm just going to wave a wand and say everybody gets one, and that that's an acceptable way of approaching what is a pretty significant thing for these charities. In many cases, we could be significantly and adversely operating their, impacting their operating budget and ability to do business in our attempt to be fair. I'm really struggling to understand this perspective of equity and not having some actual assessable criteria in terms of size, remit, overall cap of business in the town, how much of this money to the charity is going to come back to the town. I think these are really reasonable questions for us to be asking, and I'm a little uncomfortable with the notion that we should just take that good idea of, nah, they're doing business in the town, it's good that they want to do good, everybody gets one. I'm not sure everybody should get one. Help me understand.
We did approve the policy at the last meeting, which lies out the criteria.
Then I am expressing my displeasure with a policy I did not get to vote for in my absence, which is my problem, but please hear my perspective then. I don't think it's fair, and I don't support the action. The intention of equity is not to make it so that everyone gets the same thing and to call it equal. That is not equitability.
I think, though, in the sake of, you know, we're talking about nonprofits in Hopkinton, and I don't think the board has the ability to distinguish the criteria that you're describing.
I fully agree, which is why I think it should be coming to us with actual recommendations and criteria, because otherwise, I think we are susceptible to feedback and pushback from these charities. Why weren't we good enough? If I were the Hopkin Public Library Foundation or Library Friends, and I was the one who was not chosen today, I would be very upset about not being the proverbial pretty girl or boy at the dance, and I would wonder why that was okay. And I would find it to be rather capricious that my leaders thought it was. I think we picked an easy path forward that does not fully reflect the complexity of the task ahead of us, and I would strongly encourage us to reconsider in the future. I do not agree with this proposal.
Okay. Shahadul?
I think it's amazing that we raise almost, what, quarter million a year for charity across the town, so this is a great privilege, and that brings vibrancy and a lot of wonderful work that the residents and these organizations do. So I always look forward to this, and I'm sure everyone does, and kudos, and thanks to the BAA. I think, Elaine, the rationale and distribution you have, to me, it makes sense. One question I had is for reducing the library's bibs. Did we consult with them and see if they're okay or impact them, because library hours and everything is getting, you know, pressured with the budget and other scenarios?
No, we did not. We did not consult, no.
Yeah, that would be one thing I would request to kind of check in, because, you know, library is a great place, has great service, and every year, we, even for a couple of thousand or maybe a few $10,000, you see they're often on the edge to provide the hours and services, especially on Saturday, Sunday, which is very much appreciated by the residents. So that would be my only concern on this. And in terms of the nonprofit pool and others, I think, you know, it's always good to have some checkpoints and vetting, but these are all pretty much known and have been coming and doing stuff. Is there any known concern or anything that we are aware?
So I will note that the policy adopted by the board says that the registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations that must undertake public service activities within the town of Hopkinton. So in each application, they describe the activities that they provide in Hopkinton.
They are qualified with those criteria?
Yes. We do have some new organizations this year as well.
That's what I thought. I wanted to make sure it's hard and visible. I think with that, one, one thing we could check, like we did last couple of years, if we can ask BAA if they can grant their, with the library request, only a couple that are short right now, so maybe they will consider providing those extra ones. Otherwise, I think I'm good with this.
Okay. Brian, you still out there?
I am, yes, thank you. As a 30-year charity runner for the marathon, this one's close to my heart. My sense is that the approach is the option one approach, Elaine, as submitted in the packet, is that correct, that we're talking about?
That's correct.
Yeah, and that's been basically what many previous boards have viewed as the fairest approach to this process. I think all of those charities do good works on behalf of the community and their individual efforts to make a difference in the world, so I support option one.
Okay. So with that, I mean, I'll look for a motion from the board here, because we've got an option, similar to what we've done in the past, so.
I move to distribute the Boston Marathon invitational entries as written on the agenda.
We do have to do the random drawing then for the library organizations?
I think it's friendly amendment to clarify that I believe you mean option one, based on discussion.
So I move to distribute the Boston Marathon invitational entries as per option one in the agenda. Does that cover, how we are, I don't see the option one written specifically here.
It's on the handout, in the back. On the back side.
Okay. Packet on packets today.
I support the option one, but I would be happy to hear from the two library boards in case they have a preference, if one of them is shorter on funds this year than the
Who does touch a truck?
I'll second the motion that's on the table, and then we can talk to the library folks, Amy.
So we've got a motion and a second. Do we have anyone present from either the two library, the Public Library Friends and the Library Foundation?
There are a lot of people on Zoom, so if they're on Zoom, they could raise their hand.
For the purposes of this discussion, which of these groups supports and puts on Touch a Truck?
Foundation, I believe.
Answers my question.
So, Amy, I'm guessing no one on from those?
Don't see any hands raised, no.
So we have the ability to, so we got a motion and a second. Do we need to determine which one before we can, okay. Does the board want to make recommendations, or does it truly need to be random? Are we flipping a coin?
I mean, I'm going to vote no either way, but I would tell you based on the fact that the Touch a Truck is done by the foundation, and there have been concerns expressed about funding and sustainability of that event, this would seem to be a direct link in terms of ensuring the likelihood of Touch a Truck next year. I think that's something the community has made clear to us, they view as a priority.
Both names are in this cup if someone wants to do a random drawing.
Pick out the one I just said.
Not up to me, it's up to you.
I lean toward the random draw because I don't know, like, I tend to think the foundation has more money in the bank, usually they're a big organization, but, so it's really hard to pick, so I guess I would rather do a random draw. It can go either way.
So just at the end here, we're having an actual conversation about the potential objective value of the final two, and now it's okay to be random? Just trying to understand our perspective on equity here.
So it's by no means a perfect answer, but I think in the interest of time and these organizations need to get this rolling, I will pull one.
Do you want to be the one to draw, sir? My apologies to the libraries.
The Hopkin Public Library Friends. So, all right, so with that, we've got a motion and a second. I think, do we need to amend that to include the Hopkin Public Library Friends?
I think we're good.
Okay. So this one needs to be roll call.
Edelman, yes.
Matt Kizner, no.
Amy Ritter-Bush, yes.
Brian?
Brian Hurd, yes.
And Joe Clark, yes. All right, I think--
Can I add, we have modified this policy over the years, several times, so we can certainly do that next year.
Yeah, I'm very open to modifying the policy moving forward. I know we have some people in attendance that showed up, you know, for their respective nonprofits. We appreciate you coming, sitting through the meeting, and all the work that you do in town, so thank you, everyone.
To the chairman, that's one. Elaine, if we can follow up with BAA on the additional ask for the bibs?
Yep.
And we have tightened the criteria over the years because of this problem of getting too many applicants.
All right, so next, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. The board will consider the following. Select Board will consider approving the minutes of the November 4, 2025 meeting. Select Board will consider confirming the town manager's appointment of Ann Richardson as the administrative assistant to the Human Resources Department and the town clerk's The Select Board will consider approving a request from the Hopkin Cross Country and Track for $5,039, of which $4,275 is to be used for MF Athletic Kart with starting blocks and $764 to be used for MF Hurdle holders. The equipment will be used at meets and practices throughout the school year, and the Select Board will consider approving Mass General Law Chapter 138, Section 15F Farmers Market Licenses for Rashford and Sons-- farmers market licenses for Rushford and Sons Brewery House to sell beer at the Hopkinton Winters Farmers Market on Sundays from November 23, 2025, to March 16, 2026. A Mass. General Law Chapter 138, Section 15F certification has been approved by the Mass. Department of Agricultural Resources. The retail sale and sampling must be completed in accordance with MDR regulations. Sample size cannot exceed one ounce and no more than five samples can be served to a single individual. Samples must be provided in single-use disposable cups. Vendor must provide suitable trash receptacles to accommodate the same sample cups. Vendor must ID individuals requesting a sample to verify that they are of legal age. And bottles opened and used for sampling cannot be sold to the public. All paperwork, including tip certification insurance, have been provided. So, well, it looks like two of our members took a, took a break, so. Yep, so Brian's there. Up and one's back. So I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda or if anyone wants to break anything out.
I just want to confirm that all the required inspections and everything, all the documentation is in order for the farmer's market pouring licenses?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second, and my apologies, I wanted to let our victims in the back know that they had been given bibs and they no longer needed to be here.
Perfect. So we've got a motion and a second. So it goes to a roll call vote. Amy, would you like this?
Amy Ritter-Bush, yes.
Matthew Kizner, yes.
Brian? Brian, you're on mute.
Sorry, Brian Hurd, yes.
And Joe Clark, yes. Mr. Monmon is absent, so consent agenda, next. Select board will continuous discussion of the licensing process, including the development of written common vicular license policy. So I think, and Elaine, feel free to jump in here. This was, you know, there's been a lot of conversation, you know, two meetings in a row. I think we've come to identify, like, some changes that we've needed to make, you know, implementing the Corey and the Sari checks for all license holders and, you know, onsite staff. That was part of it. And I think tonight we were looking to kind of formalize some of that, correct?
Or go in the direction toward, you know, identifying some of the additional items we can include in a written policy that we draft for to review.
Okay.
So there is some pending items that have yet to be considered.
Do you mind walking us through which items have not been considered yet? I think we were almost, you know, unanimous in support of, you know, the Corey, the Sari. But what are these additional items, if you can walk us through?
So the additional policy changes that have been suggested by, by various people are first, not issuing any licenses until all inspections are satisfactorily completed and all related permits from other departments have been issued. If business is not in compliance after December 31, would be required to close. Alternatively, the board can grant an extension of time to a date certain. The second one is doing a bylaw change at town meeting to modify the fingerprinting bylaw to include business owners and managers of what, common vicular licensees or perhaps other businesses as well. The third is reviewing businesses' financial records, including loans and ownership interests. The fourth is requiring applicants to submit personal information forms consistent with what Boston requires for all owners, shareholders, officers, managers, and persons with a financial interest in the business. Next would be conducting Corey and Sari checks of certain individuals in a corporate business structure and shareholders. So it's beyond the owners and managers. And the last one would be moving Corey checks from the town manager's office to the police department as they have greater access.
Okay. So, you know, from the board's perspective, I think we should probably go through those line by line. So do you want to reiterate the top one, Elaine, and we'll go one at a time, please?
Sure, but even before I get to that, so just following up on another request of the board. I did attend the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meeting and have some feedback from them on the licensing process. So at some point, we can do that as well.
That's good, yeah.
So the first item was not having any licenses continue after December 31 or granting an extension of time if there are outstanding inspections or other department reviews.
All right, so who would like to start? Shadul, would you like to start?
I need a minute.
I was going to say, I do think that we shouldn't grant the license, obviously, unless everything is in. But I, because it is very busy during the holiday season, I think I would like us to go with an extension to a time certain, like 30 days. And if they're not done 30 days after the meeting, we were going to vote on it, then we would drop the license.
That makes sense to me. And I would further add, if it's a business that already has a license in town, I know we're talking renewal, but like longstanding, yeah, I'm going to view that very differently. But that makes sense to me, Amy. Risk-based is what I hear there. Be smart.
Yeah, I have a couple of clarifying questions. I think you probably have touched on those if you can. May, one is, what's the, I don't know if I asked it earlier, but what is the median time for application approval today? And with the introduction of Corey and Sari, what is the impact we can expect timeline-wise?
So generally, all applications are received in the late October, but definitely in the month of November. And that's when that work is done. And, you know, we will, we'll make that happen during that time period. All alcohol licenses have to be submitted and signed in the month of November. So there's a definite time limit there. And then the board does the license approvals at its meetings in December. This year, we're going to be doing them all at the second meeting on December because we're still receiving an application. It's taking a bit longer for some people to get those Corey forms. So we're working on those as they come in. So it can be a little more time-consuming, but we would get that done within the time needed.
Okay, so it looks like time may not be a big adverse impact, which is great. So definitely in favor of Corey. And is it the same with Sari? Or we haven't checked on that?
No forms are necessary for that, so just the Corey form.
Just Corey, okay. Second is, do we know how many other Massachusetts communities integrate Corey today? I know a couple, Natick and Newton, but do we have that?
Based on the list that I provided at the last, I believe it was the last meeting, I think I surveyed 12 to 13 communities, and of those, including us, four.
Four, okay. That's great.
And that was, that was for new applications. So it's probably, some of that four, I'm going to probably, going to assume it's probably not all four who use them on renewals.
I think the chart that you gave us last time, it looks like four towns do the Corey, or sorry, three towns do the Corey and one does the Sari of the list you gave us.
Yeah, if that's what it says, then.
I think with all the discussions we had, it would be good to, my recommendation is to include the Corey and looking at that for both renewal as well as new applications, which we are probably going to be benefited of with all the, some of the, you know, concerns that we want to address certainly. And second is the timing and the digitization. It's, I wanted to check if we have any other update on the workflow digitization so we can automate it, make it transparent, visible, and also can be more efficient in many ways.
So we're tracking the time and we will be going to an online system in 2026.
Awesome, okay.
And so you kind of, you kind of walked back in. So we've got a couple, did you see the additional changes? So right now, we're going one by one, just because I want, like, so right now, we're talking about licenses that will be issued unless, you know, all the inspections are complete. From Amy and Matt, they went through, you know, no licenses being issued until inspections are complete with, but with the ability to do extensions based off timing and need as appropriate. So that, that part was a little bit more, you know, we'll call it loose. So we're just going on that one. We're going to go through each of these one by one, okay? So.
I see. Thank you for helping me catch up. I think that I like the idea of extension in a clean extension form. So we extend the timeline and then do all the due diligence and then go by that new timeline, then kind of mixing things up.
So it sounds like you're in agreement, Brian, for this first one? You in agreement? Thoughts?
I'm fine with the extension, but I'm wondering who would be the one granting the extension? Would that be the town manager's office or would they have to come to the select board for an extension?
Be the board.
And would we do it at the last meeting of December? We would grant the extensions.
At the time of you review the licenses at your meeting, you could grant the extension to a date specific.
I would ask, Elaine, that you give us some guidance for the perspective of town hall staff about when it's reasonable for those to be submitted to you such that they can actually be digested and considered for that final meeting. I don't want people coming on the 30th and believing that we're going to review those on the 31st. That's not fair.
Yeah, typically, we have not had that problem.
I think, I think the board granting the extension is going to create a little bit of a quagmire. I'm, I'm fine with the extension. I would prefer it come from the town manager's office, though, than the board because we're going to give you the policy, which is what we are, the policy. The policy is you can grant the extension. The town manager, the administration, the day-to-day, you can figure out exactly what that extension is going to be and go ahead and do it. Otherwise, you're going to run into all kinds of timing problems, as Matt suggests.
I disagree with you, Brian, but that's a delegation of risks to the town manager.
That's, that's the charter. That is the charter.
Hopefully not for long.
We are, we are so far in the weeds on topics across town government right now that we don't belong in, but that's a topic for another day, I guess. Anyway, that's my thought. If you guys want to do something different, that's fine.
Okay, so in general, I heard agreement around no licenses without inspections being completed, but an openness to extensions through the board.
Yes.
Okay.
That makes sense.
All right, so I've got that marked down. So number two was, and this one, I mean, we're talking about FBI database checks on business owners and managers via fingerprinting, but it needs to go through as a bylaw at town meeting. So I don't think there's really anything to discuss right now. I think it's important to bring up in the spring for town meeting. It'll be discussed, but for the board tonight, we can probably move on.
Yeah, and we'll start working on the draft amendment.
Mr. Chair, before we get into that amendment and working on that draft amendment, I think we need to get town council's input before we start spending time on that. But that, that has all kinds of issues, in my opinion. Legal issues.
I think there's a lot of due diligence around that. I agree. But, you know, for the sake of tonight's meeting, I think we'll, we'll have council weigh in and review it. And, you know, I don't think we need to discuss it anymore tonight, though.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, so the next one was review of each business's financial records, including loans and ownership interests. This, this one for me, I, I'll go first because I don't see this as, you know, one, feasible for the board to be reviewing. And two, I would really want town council's opinion on this, if it's even legal. I have a lot of concerns with this one specifically. So I'll, I'll kind of look to the board for their thoughts.
Yeah, I share the concern as well from a legal and risk perspective, however. I do think it is reasonable for the town to be aware of anyone who has what we could reasonably consider to be a pass-through profit or ownership percentage of the business. If you stand as a first-party individual to directly profit from the operation of the business, we are in business with you. And we deserve to know that at the point of issuance because you are, in that sense, an owner, operator, and controller. You have an ownership stake, no matter how small. I think it's our duty to know all of the business owners in town, no matter what percentage. That doesn't mean I should have opinions about how much money you have, how appropriate it is that you're opening the ninth pizza place in our town. I don't think we have any thoughts about that, but I do think it is reasonable to know exactly who is doing business in our community. I think the town's been pretty clear about that.
Amy?
I think I agree with you, that I'm not sure we need to be looking into every business's financial records, loans and ownerships interest. Yeah, I'm not real comfortable with that one.
Shadul?
Yeah, I think this one, that, first of all, we definitely should seek and vet with the legal advice and the council's advice. And I do think that for business financial records, there are many government agencies and rules and regulations, state and federal level, to go into those details and oversee and have various related laws that would be applicable. And it's very complex. I don't think, from a town perspective, it would be A, practical and B, also implementable in many ways. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Brian?
I would be opposed to this approach. Thank you.
And I did receive comments from the chamber members on this issue today. And this is from individuals, not, it's not a board vote, it's not an opinion of the Chamber of Commerce itself, but it's individuals who were at the meeting. They, regarding their review of business or personal financial documents, the questions, what is the point? What are you looking for? Will the board judge the financial position of a business and determine that someone shouldn't open a new business? This is not the government's role. Some or all business financial information may be private and cannot be disclosed. And a review of business finances is overreach. So those were the comments I heard at the meeting.
Okay. So for this one, I think right now, I heard a majority of the board not in favor of this. So I think, I would like to, you know, still, I think two of us wanted an idea from council on what's legal here. I certainly would want that opinion for future discussion because I'm sure this will come up again. The next one was require applicants to submit personal information forms consistent with Boston for all owners, shareholders, officers, managers, and persons with a financial interest in the business. That.
That's the same question.
It's, yeah, it's the same. Drew Greeling, to me, it seems the same.
It's a little bit different. I think it's a request for information, perhaps of names and addresses and information, not necessarily finances.
Okay.
So that seems like an easier thing for businesses to fill out a form. Like, I don't have any objection to that.
This is what the city of Boston does.
So it's so interesting because I view it very differently, whereas I think it is incumbent to disclose the ownership percentage of the business and who or what entity has it. I'm not, I'm not sure I'm entitled to all that much more than that. The private citizen of the LLC is allowed to own the business. I just think I'm allowed to know who owns the business. This is where I do start to blush a little bit about our own overreach in terms of, like, I don't think I need to know where Sammy is and where they went to school and what color their house is and do they have a dog. I just hope they're qualified to own a business.
Shadul?
My understanding is financial interest, isn't that public information? Like, if you search on the Commonwealth database, you can see who are the stakeholders or owners of a particular business.
It depends, and we do have this information on our alcohol licensees already.
Yeah, I, if it's, yeah, if it's easy.
Not shareholders, sorry. We don't have necessarily shareholders.
Not shareholders, okay. If it's easy to collect, I wouldn't mind, but I, again, I'm also thinking about overreach and also the practicality of administering it combined. And what benefit partially are we kind of going to harvest from that? Because we, the business's financial and other transactional and all those details, there are various bureaus and various, you know, other government entities who does it more thoroughly. Are we going to be able to do it with our staffing and all our administration and processes? Do you know if any town does that? And what's your take on that practical administration of this?
I don't know if we know what Boston does with the information that they leave.
I guess, I had a thought. I know Brian hasn't spoken, though, but I wondered if it is so that for the ethics law, that you can see if these people who own the businesses are making donations to city council members or something, which could be the same for this. Or if you know who the owners are, are they making donations to the select board members or something? If you knew the names, but you may not. We don't always know the names. So I'm guessing that's just for in Boston, but.
Because the other part is, what are we going to do with that information? So say someone discloses they have 10 owners. Now, are we going to vet those 10 owners again? Or what is the objective of, you know, end goal here?
I will say, the city of Boston, even though they didn't fully respond to my request for information, I did ask them to clarify whether or not those people were Corey-checked, and they said they are not. So not doing any further background check on a Corey check, it's just the personnel at information farms.
So this, this is kind of bringing to mind the conversation around, like Starbucks, right? You know, we hold the license, so if we require something like this and, you know, I'm assuming some of this information is publicly available for a large company like that, but in other situations, it may not be. So if, if they're not able to get us that information, are we, is the board then looking to, you know, hold the license or not reissue the license? That doesn't, back to Shadul's comments around, like, what's, what's the end goal here? I don't know. I'm not sure if I'm supportive of this one just from the standpoint of, is it feasible for us to actually do something with the information? is it feasible for us to actually do something with the information? You know, whereas, you know, with the Corey and Sari checks, it was very easy. Who's going to be on site? Who's going to be interacting with the people in the town of Hopkinton? That made a lot more sense to me. But for this one, I'm, I'm not so sure it does. Brian, thoughts?
Yeah, a couple of thoughts. I think a lot of the information that some might be interested in is readily available through the Secretary of State's office for the corporation or the company that would be applying. So, if somebody wants to check something out, they can go to the Secretary of State's office and get that info in terms of ownership and things like that. Secondly, I love the city of Boston. Hopkinton is not the city of Boston. I don't think we have to compare ourselves and try to keep up with the city of Boston and its 700,000 residents and everything that goes on inside 128 there and, you know, sort of set Hopkinton up to sort of behave in the same way. I think that this one, like that other, I don't think is necessary, and I would oppose.
So, I, I didn't feel like I had a good feel for this one from the board. So, in general, Amy, just quick summaries. Supportive or against it?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I don't, I don't think it's necessary, I guess.
I'm a no on this one.
Shy Dole? Supportive or against it?
Against, said this way.
Okay. So, I, I think there's enough sentiment there, you know, that, that doesn't make sense for the board. Conduct Corey and Sari checks of certain individuals in a corporate business structure and shareholders. Was this, was this kind of in relation to, like, the Starbucks idea? Remind me for this one, right?
Correct. So, how far in that corporate structure do we seek information? That was, Ben suggested that we consider shareholders as well.
This is the relevant management designated area.
Sorry, say that again?
Just for, like, a company like Starbucks, I don't care what Mr. Schultz or anyone else who is the CEO of that company is doing. What's relevant to me is who the local face of the company is, either the manager of the initial establishment, the town manager, the regional manager. There is someone within the chain of local command that is a much more relevant point of entity contact than just shareholder writ large. I'm a shareholder. You know who I am.
I think the Corey and Sories are important for a manager who'll be on site, but I don't think they're necessary for the corporate business owners, shareholders.
Agree. Shy Dole?
Yeah, I think the onsite managers and license holders, that'll be, that'll be my...
Brian?
Do we even designate who the onsite manager is for a common vic?
Yes.
I know we do for alcohol.
Elaine just confirmed that we do.
We do. The only difference with the alcohol licenses is when they want a change of manager, they have to come to the board for approval for common vic.
Right, right. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I don't have a problem with Corey, Sory, as long as town council says it's okay because we are not attorneys. This is not a court of law. I think as long as town council says it's okay, I'm good with a Corey, Sory. For those onsite employees, they would be interacting with the public and local, you know, employees as well. But the shareholder thing, absolutely not.
Okay. I'm, I'm in agreement with that. I think anyone that's onsite, as we've discussed previously, it sounds like we're all in agreement, needs to be Corey and Sori-ed. The business structure, shareholders is kind of out of scope for that.
The only thing I would add, Joe, if I could, please?
Yep.
What are we going to do with that Corey and Sory information? Are we going to say, oh, you got a black mark, you can't work there, or, oh, you can't have a license?
I share that concern, yeah.
I understand...
That's what I want to understand from town council because I don't think you can discriminate based on someone having a criminal record.
So, so I think, you know, and this is just my opinion, you know, we do need council's opinion on this. I think with everything that's, you know, transpired in town, you know, we need to be more informed, right? And, you know, my, my hope is that, you know, all these Corey and Sory checks are, are clean, right? If they are not, that, to me, that warrants an individual discussion in what's otherwise a more routine conversation around license renewals. I, I think we need to just keep that option on the table and, and discuss it when that time comes.
Yeah, sorry, I don't want to get lost in the process sauce there because that felt like a little bit of wizardry for me. We don't actually have to get into any of that to be having a conversation about this, whether or not we're actually going to be looking into this, whether or not we bring it here. I'm having trouble with this one, gang. I feel really lost, both in terms of the depth that we're bringing and the depth that we don't want to bring, and I'm having a hard time truly maintaining the thread of how much we feel like we should be involved here. When you say, what do we do if they flag a Corey or a Sory? I don't have to tell you how I vote. I don't have to tell you why I vote. I simply have to come up here and say yes or no. I can be farcically uninformed and just decide that I don't like the fact you're wearing a black dress and decide to deny you a license. I do not owe an obligation of explanation. I don't think it's appropriate to imply that we need to give one here. It's information. If council says I can have it, I'm allowed to use it in my decision-making, but let's not mislead the public. I don't owe you an explanation about how I vote, ever. You're welcome to ask for one. I'll give it to you, but it's not required.
Sorry. Are you done?
Yeah.
Through the chair, I think I like the idea of checking this with the town council so that we understand, you know, our legal jurisdiction as well as are prepared from our town's legal liability perspective. That's just checkpoint. But I definitely want that information to be available, and we already are doing it for liquor licenses today, and it's part of the package, right, usually? So, it'll be the same, that we include that and have it in front of us, and it'll be transparent.
For the owners.
Right? And then we would all have all the information that we want to see.
I think, Mr. Manon, I agree, like, we would have that for a liquor license, but that's supported by state law, and state law requires that. I don't believe state law requires some of the things we're talking about, and that doesn't mean we can't do it, but we have to make sure that we do it in a way that's not discriminatory and doesn't get the town in trouble and get a lawsuit coming from a different direction.
I, I agree with most of her. If we deny one personal license, but another with a similar background track gets a license, like, we could be, we could be in trouble, especially if one's a protected class and the other's not.
But if we don't explicitly explain why we do or don't create any license, we are already in that trouble. You are, again, drawing a little bit of a straw man contrast there, for my taste. We do not explain every vote. We cannot stand behind this and say it could be scary if.
May I suggest, I think we are all saying that we want Corey and Sory, if I heard correctly?
Yes.
Just from a legal perspective, we want the opinion to understand what are the repercussions.
And what are our options? Like, if someone has one misdemeanor, is that a license denial? I don't know.
All right. Let's just start with a general opinion from council around the topic. I think the, the key point for this discussion is the board is in agreement with Corey and Sory for anyone that's onsite in the businesses in Hopkinton, and...
Sorry, for my clarity, our issuance is purely discretionary. Yes, somebody can come, and there is no legal requirement for us to say yes to a license, even if they meet requirements. I'm, I'm asking a question.
I think that's a legal question.
I would like to understand that question because, to me, that goes above and beyond all of the conversation we're having here because if I'm just ultimately denied, allowed to say you're in a black dress and that's it, then all the rest of this is really moot.
But if someone's a protected class, which I guess we need to get the town council, if someone's a protected class and we're only denying people in that protected class the license, then I think we would get sued.
Yes, but then they're not in a black dress, they're in a very specific special dress.
I think we've heard a couple inputs on what we want an opinion on from council. Then, the last one was moving Corey checks from the town manager's office to the police department as they have greater access. So, who wants to start with this one? Shy Dole?
Again, based on the response we got from Deputy Chief Scott, it seems there are some legal questions to be clarified, right? So, I would defer to the council's view on this as well. And I looked at the metrics that lands put together, and it seems like, except for Milford, there are no other town around us, at least of those 12, that does it through the police department. So, I mean, the question would be that if the, what's implied here is that if the Corey check is done by the police department, they will have more information and more information that they can share. But is it practically correct? Based on Scott's response, it seems that may not be correct legally. So, if that is not, then there's no additional benefit of putting it on the police. But anyways, before I kind of make my mind, I think I would like to hear the council's view on this.
Okay. Matt?
I'll be honest, I don't feel like I really understand the logistics of this one. It seems to me that if the town manager has access, that they are capable of getting the information, and we're really having a little bit more of, like, an SME and accessibility conversation. Out loud, it feels like this is more of a police activity to me, but I can also appreciate that there are some resourcing constraints here. So, before we think about moving this, I also want to understand, since we're talking about making this a more embedded, firmed, and expected part of the process, what's it going to look like? And I'm, I'm going to ask you the same, Elaine, to make sure that this isn't going to be an undue burden onto staff. So, for me, it's, unless there is a specific detriment to having it done by town manager, I'm going to struggle to understand why it needs to shift. But with that said, I think the law enforcement professionals in town have more SME and applicability and a little more skin in the game. I would appreciate hearing from them.
Okay. So, the document we had, I think it was the last, it was November 4th, it had this chart of the different Corey's, and the standard Corey that the town can run is less information than what the police can run, yet it says the police can only run it on certain circumstances, and it does not include common vic draw licenses. So, I want to understand if we sent it to the police department, would they just be doing the same standard Corey the town would? Because then it, it doesn't really matter.
Yeah.
I think we've learned that we, we probably can't do this.
We can do the more...
I don't think we can do this.
You said not.
We cannot.
We cannot even do it.
We can ask council to...
That's how this reads, but unless council confirms that we can, I think we should stick with the current Corey method we use.
Agree. Brian?
Yeah, still, let's make sure legal counsel is involved in all of this and we get full, you know, color around what we can and can't do with Corey's and Sories. It's just a big can of worms that we got to be careful with.
Yeah, I, I would agree. It seems like this one makes sense to say in-house with town hall, but this puts a couple of things. We'll get a general response from council on, I think, with three or four, three items here. I think the one thing that we were in agreement on was, you know, at least no licenses without inspections, but extensions and, you know, hardlining a deadline for applications so that doesn't all flow right into the end of town. So, I think, I don't think we, I don't think we needed a motion for that tonight, right? It'll be a continued conversation to finalize that, this. So, I think, any other thoughts, Elaine? I think probably good for now.
Wanted to relay the additional comments from the chamber while, you know, before we leave the subject. They, the comment was, keep the process simple. Background and other checks and review could make the licensing process more complicated and take more time. Some professions are already background-checked and Corey'd, and if this is already being done, for some, it may not be necessary for the town to repeat it, and that anyone working with kids should have a background check. So, those were the additional comments I received.
I think that's fair feedback.
I think myself, you know, or all of us, I guess, having kids, my experience was that every single organization had to run their own, own Corey check, that they couldn't, you couldn't use a Corey from another group. Like, I had to have a separate one for Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Soccer. I have one for work, my husband has one for work. You couldn't just have one Corey and everybody look at it. They have to be done individually, I believe.
Be cool.
All right.
Right, and there's a fee each time.
Yeah, I, I saw the writing.
I think, though, we're good for this one for tonight. Right, everyone? So, that kind of moves us on to the tax classification hearing and the need for a special town meeting. So, the, the board will hold a public hearing to determine the percentage of local tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 40, Section 56. Select Board will consider discussing the need for calling a special town meeting in December to adjust the FY '27 operating budget, and if so called, to submit an article to make the appropriate budget adjustments and vote to sign the warrant in the event that it must be posted before the next meeting. So, thank you for joining us. You know, I, I think this is, this is a good thing where we're going to be charging less taxes going into the year, so the need, right, in general, our residents like hearing that. So, if you, if you guys would like to, you know, introduce yourselves for everyone, like, listening at home, and walk us through why the need for the special town meeting, and then we'll talk about the importance of why it's going to be one article.
My name is Mitchell Wolfert. I'm the deputy assessor.
Okay. Mr. Neese?
So, thank you and good evening. I'm sorry.
Do we want to start?
I'm, I'm, I'm going to. Yeah, I'm going to.
Sorry.
Set my timer for my 10 minutes so I can stay on track.
Hold on, Mr. Neese. Sorry, Kyler, what was that? Would you like to come up and join us?
Did you want to start with special town meeting and then go to the tax rate?
Yeah.
That's how you started.
Chair.
So, we, let me see.
That's before...
So, we need a motion to, Elaine, walk me through, remind me on this one.
You can call the hearing to order.
Okay, so, I'll call the public hearing to order. And Kyler, what was your recommendation?
So, I just want to explain what has transpired over the last two weeks, and then we can talk about the tax rate specifically. So, the budget that was voted in May, as we know, is based on estimates. We don't know actuals at that point in time, so the estimates that we used for FY '26 were high. And now that we've gone through our tax process and our tax rate-setting process, we realize that we don't need as much money in the operating budget as we appropriated in May. So, we would like to give the money back or rescind about 5.7 million in the operating budget back to the town. This is a great thing because we don't have to tax as much. In order to do this, we have to have a special town meeting that allows the residents to vote for the rescinding of the operating budget. What else? So, the two areas of the operating budget that were overestimated are the debt payment as well as our health and insurance costs. So, the debt payment was, we were borrowing a large amount of money, $81 million, and we were actually able to do it in a short-term note at 3%, which was a great thing for the town. And our health insurance costs were less than budgeted, over $2 million. So, those two, those two totals equal about $5.7 million. So, if we can have this town meeting at the beginning of December, it will not affect the tax-setting, the tax rate-setting process, and we will be able to issue bills at the end of December as our usual practice.
And if I could add, I think it's important to note that the state requires us to raise the amount that's voted by town meeting, even if we don't need it, which seems kind of odd, but we don't want to tax people for more than what we need. So, we think that because this amount is over $5 million, it's really important to go back to the taxpayers and give this back.
Yeah, I completely agree, and especially at a time where we know taxes are going up over the next couple of years. It's critical, more critical now than ever. And just to be clear, like, this isn't, this isn't a refund, right? Like, this was, be bills that would come out at the end of December. This has not been taxed yet. It's, you know, lowering a future tax burden.
Correct. And what John is going to present tonight is based on the assumption that the money goes back.
Yeah.
So, it's based on revised operating budget, so...
Couple of questions through, through the chair. One is, so, I mean, it's great news, we have some, you know, less spend, so to speak, but is it going to change the baseline that it can impact our projection for the current budget, upcoming budget, and subsequent budgets?
It does for health insurance. So we're going to do the same thing for FY '27. We're basing it on our revised actuals of '25. So it's actually put us in a much better position for '27.
Got it. No, that's great news. It may actually scale back the deficit that we are looking at.
Correct.
I'm going to be the party booker, so I'll go last.
Okay. Yeah, so, let's see, it's a lot. But, so it's hard to hold a town meeting in December, and we need a quorum in order to take action on anything. So I thought I'd understood from your email earlier that we couldn't set the tax rate without doing this rescinding, but we could, we could do it either way. So if we don't get quorum for some reason, we could still set the tax rate.
We have to charge the-
Have to be more than we want it to be, I know. Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. So, yeah, I think that's-
Okay, with the levy.
Yeah.
The timing of the special town meeting is equally important, because the tax bills go out at the end of December, and so that meeting has to be held the first week in December, so that then-
Very tight timeline.
SDR can then process everything, and those bills can go up.
Yeah. Okay. I'm supportive of what we're doing, it's just, it's a very tight timeline, so we'll see.
Can I have a follow-up? Oh, sorry, after that.
Kyler, my friend, help me understand. If we don't spend money that's been allocated in the operating budget, it rolls into free cash, a hilariously named term for the excess budget. If we didn't spend this money, it would result in, or rather, if we didn't make this adjustment, it would result in an increase to the tax rate, but eventually I would get the money back? Yes, it would roll into free cash?
Correct. We would have issues with the tax rate-setting process-
Of course.
That would roll into-
But it feels like there has to be some urgency around this one. Are we close to some sort of, I don't know, limit that might be causing us to have additional constraints around just what it is the top-line budgetary number is? I'm sorry, I don't mean to ask a leading question here. I very much do.
If I might. So when we prepared the tax forms, we found out that because of the budget that was approved at town meeting, that we were about $6.5 million over the tax levy.
Ding ding ding!
That cannot happen. Without a special town meeting and without rescinding the money that we don't need, we will not be able to set the tax rate without finding more money, raising more money somehow, but not in the tax rate, reducing expenses, and that's a considerable sum of money.
Thanks, John. Huh! It sounds like there's a bigger issue at play here. We were at the levy limit, but that's not how this conversation started. So it sounds like this is an elective for us, and that there is actual, both legal and financial requirements at play here. But, and I apologize for asking one more follow-up question here, but I'll just assume all of you in the room and listening aren't experts in Massachusetts finance law. What does it mean to be at the levy limit, and what might I, a taxpayer in Hopkinton, understand the impact to me-to-be if we perhaps needed to exceed the levy limit? That sounds bad. Would it cost me money?
Override, me?
Yeah.
So, the levy limit is really a combination of factors. So it's the limit we had in the previous year, and what we have for additional growth, and if there are overrides, which have not been voted at this time in Hopkinton.
I'm sorry, did you say override?
Yes. So there is a way to exceed the levy limit, but without the override, we are, we are bound by the maximum levy, and we cannot spend more than that and set the tax rate.
Okay. I'm going to stop being fun and get to the point here. So it sounds an awful lot like you're telling me that the town operational budget is so close to the levy limit that we need to actually rescind debt in the form of operating expense that has already been issued and taxed from the town, so that we do not exceed a limit we cannot exceed. That sounds like a problem, folks. Certainly a reason to have a town meeting, never mind the $6 million back in your pocket. Here is the part that isn't being discussed that I would very much like you to hear. If we are this close to the levy limit, it means we cannot continue the budgetary growth the way we have had now without overrides. You have been waiting for your canary in the coal mine. You have been waiting for your red alert. Here it is, folks. The budget is at its seams. Please, please, please talk to the people sitting next to me and ask them to be brave and do something about it. I beg you. Thank you for your time in highlighting this issue. It sounds serious, and I look forward to working with you on the special town meeting.
Through the chair, the one clarification that I would like to make is, there are ways to go about doing special town meetings. Elaine and I have been talking that even though when we vote this in May, it's based on estimates, we can have a follow-up fall meeting to do the operating budget based on actuals and make our revision in a more thoughtful manner, as opposed to having an emergency special town meeting in December. So it's something that we'll continue to talk about, knowing how this issue emerged this year.
I think it's important to note that the town does not need an override. It does not need the money. It's based on some estimates that were made and some additional savings that were made, so we don't need the override, because we don't need the money.
I agree, but this is a warning that we are close.
All right, so, and another thing that is important for the residents, you know, doing the special town meeting, it is rushed, it's a very short time window, but, you know, that would allow months of our residents not paying taxes that they don't need to pay. So, with that, you know, Mr. Neese, would you like to walk us through the tax rates?
Through the chair, yes, sure. One and two.
Can we go back to the PowerPoint?
One.
We can see it.
Sorry, Kyler, one quick question through the chair. If we don't have the quorum in December, as Amy expressed worry, and we are all worried because it's a short one, and if we don't have quorum, what are the consequences?
We will have to get back together with the Department of Revenue and let them know that we are unable to rescind the money and give back, and revise the operating budget number to go below the levy limit, and we will have to look for options with them.
Oh, okay. And could that also translate into collecting the taxes, but keep aside the extra into the cash reserve or free cash for next year?
When we had our initial conversation with them, they referenced us taxing on the original amount, the $126 million, and then doing a revised tax rate for '27. We would have to get more clarity around that process.
Thank you, that makes sense. And one last comment on that. I like the idea of having a checkpoint later part of the year, so we can be close to the actual spend, and that can also help calibrate with the free cash flow problem that we are talking about. And something to keep in mind, that now that we are going to have the charter review time, is that something we can bake into the charter that would make it easier for all of us, instead of having, you know, kind of a questionable second meeting where we may or may not get the quorum and depend on that? Is there any other way we could handle it better? Food for thought.
Food for thought.
Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you, and good evening. If we could put the PowerPoint up. So this is the tax classification hearing for the select board, for the town residents, and for Hopkinton property owners. My name is John Neese, I am the principal assessor. This is Mitchell Walpert, our deputy assessor. Peter Mimo, our board member, is here. Leslie Fakari, our board chair, is on Zoom, and we very much appreciate having Kyler with us as well. So I will go quickly, if we can go to the next slide. So, this is really what you'll need to decide tonight, and sorry, but my timer is on, so I don't see my time. So you'll have to select either a residential factor of one, if you want a single tax rate, or if you want a split tax rate, then the residential factor will be different. Whether or not to grant an open space discount, a small residential exemption, and a small commercial exemption. And I'm not going to read through this material, you had this in advance, but that explains what those different exemptions are. If we could continue on to a couple of more slides. Go to the next one, and the next one. This is just evaluation summary, and we'll pass over that one now to the next one, because we'll be covering that in a minute in the PowerPoint itself. This is just a chart that shows the percentage increase in the different classes of property over the last five years, and then the 10 highest taxpayers in Hopkins. Next slide. This shows us the total value of property in Hopkinton, and the split is 84 residential and 16% commercial, industrial, and personal. It lists the average single-family home value, the average condominium value, the new growth revenue of $1.25 million, where the new growth came from, and the property tax itself raises about 70% of the required funds. The next one, and please feel free to interrupt me at any time, but I am going to move quickly in the interest of time. This just really explains that the residents of Hopkington and town meeting play a role in setting the tax rate. It's not the assessor that sets the tax rate. If we go to the next one, it's a very simple formula. Once we do have the tax levy, we divide that by the total value of the town, and that tells us what the proposed tax rate would be. Based on these numbers, it would be $14.18. If we go to the next slide. So what this tells you is $14.18 would be for commercial, industrial, and personal property, $14.20 for residential property, and that is because of the senior means-tested circuit breaker and the new school construction exemptions. Those have to be funded within the residential class, so because of that, that bumps up that tax rate by about two pennies, and that compares to 1416 and 1418 last year. The next one. This is just a page from the tax rate recap, which shows the amount of money that we have to raise and the breakdown of those funds. The next slide. So this is the average assessment and the average tax bill for a single-family property, for a condominium, for a commercial property, and for an industrial property. And just as an example, on one of them, this year it would be $14,140 for a single-family compared to $13,030, which is at the bottom of the slide, but kind of covered up by that. The next one. This just comes from the Massachusetts Department of Revenue and their statistics on what the average assessed value of a property in Hopkinton has been for a single-family over the last 10 years. Next slide will tell us some of the reasons that a property could increase in value or decrease in value. Next one. These are statistics, and these are just the general increases in the classes of property. Single-family, about 10%, condominiums, 5%, and commercial and industrial property state about the same from last year. The next slide, I do always caution anyone in terms of statistics, those were general averages, this is just one sample street in Hopkinton. This is real data, so it shows the value last year and this year's value, the dollar difference and the percentage difference. And even though some of those went up right around the 10% number that we talked about for single families, you can see in this sample, the average is a 13% increase, and the range is actually 8.5% to 18%. Next one. This is just another group, another group of statistics from a commercial publication, the Warren Group, and it shows the median value of a single-family and a condominium in Hopkinton over the last 10 years. The next slide. This is information from fiscal year '25, but we do like to point out that we do like to provide a statutory exemption to anyone in Hopkington who qualifies. Last year, there were 72 of those exemptions for just under $167,000 in total. The next one. This talks about what I started with, a residential factor of one, if you're going to decide on a single tax rate, or the residential factor will change, it will be less than one if you decide on a split rate. Next slide. This is the options table, and what happens is, if we were using a single tax rate for every class of property, and there were no circuit breaker or new school construction exemptions, the rate would be $14.18 for every class of property. Next slide. Again, this is just explaining the residential factor. If we go to the next slide, the next couple of slides lay out the options table. If you were to split the rate, I'm not going to bother explaining that one. Or the next one, if you would go to that, would show on the right-hand side the difference in a split rate between a residential and CIP type of property. To put that in perspective, if we go to the next slide, and I'm not advocating for a single rate or a split rate, that is entirely, you know, the board's decision, but I just wanted to give you a sense of what that means. So the shift is a percentage change to the commercial and industrial property. So for example, if we go in a couple of columns from the left side of the page to where it says the split tax rate is 105, and you can split the rate at anything you wanted to, if that was your decision, but you will see that for the average bill on a single-family property, that would be a savings of $139.40 for a residential property owner. And I'm not saying that that's not an important sum, but you have to understand what that does. So the 5%, the 1 to 5 ratio shifts to the commercial and industrial property. So by saving residential property owners some sum of money, you increase the commercial tax by another $1,550, and the industrial tax by another $5,500. And just one more example, if we just carry it over to the right, for example, all the way, if you split the rate at a 1.5 differential, you would save a substantial sum of money for your residential property owners, but you're increasing the average tax on a commercial property by $15,000, and on an industrial property by $55,000. The next one, the next slide, we're going to skip, that's a duplicate actually, to one that was in previously. So these are the decisions you have to make, open space, small, commercial, and residential. The next couple of slides, you can just kind of skip through them for me, one, two, the next two slides, again, those just lay out the decisions that you have to make. This is the motion slide, and we're going to come back to that in a minute, but if we could go to the next one. This is the LA 5 options and certification. This we have to show you, and you have to vote to approve, but we can, let's see, this is the first page, so. This is, this is what shows the impact of the circuit breaker and the new school construction exemption, and how we calculate that out. And if we go two more slides in, right there, that will show, sort of in that, yes, in that middle column, under tax rates, it will show that the circuit breaker and the new school construction exemptions have changed that $14.18 to a rate of $14.20 for the commercial property. So now, if we back up one, two, I think it's three slides, right there. So now you have your job, you need to decide on, you need to make the motions on all of these five items. I am going to leave one and six to you. I will help you with the motions for two, three, and four. One and five, I'm sorry, for you. But on two, three, and four, I just wanted to make it clear that you are going to vote to your decision, but I'll tell you why. Not implement an open space, a residential, or a small commercial exemption. The reason being, we do have open space in Hopkinton, obviously, but this is a specific classification that the state uses, it's Land Use Code 200. There is no Class Code 200 property in Hopkinton, so even if you voted a discount, it would be a moot point. There's nothing to, nothing to provide that discount to. And I'm not saying that you shouldn't have a residential exemption or a small commercial exemption, but we have analyzed these issues before, we have discussed them, you know, previously. It's really an issue that if you're interested in, you have to tell me to come back in January or February of the calendar year, explain them to you, show you the analysis, because if you decide to implement one of those tonight, you won't set a tax rate for another six months, because the applications, the analysis has to be done, the discussion has to be done. We'd have to prepare an application, and residential property owners and small commercial property owners would need a couple of months to file those applications with all of their, with all of their information, and then they would have to be approved by the Board of Assessors. So, I am finished, thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you. It's detailed as always. Brian, you want to start with comments from the board on this one?
You might leave that last slide. Yeah, I think a single tax rate, obviously, is the way to go. I don't think it's worth the burden on the businesses for a few bucks for the residents, and we need to try and continue to build that commercial tax base. And then I would go with the typical exemptions, John, that we've done in the past. I don't think this needle is ever going to move a whole heck of a lot, given the type of community we have and the number of residences versus commercial, so I'd stay the course.
Okay, thank you. Amy?
Yeah, I agree with Brian that I would not want to do a split tax rate, because we have so few businesses as it is, and it's very little benefit to the residential taxpayers to increase on the businesses.
See, I like business too. I think this is right as it is.
Chadwell?
Yeah, I think, given, you know, where we are, it wouldn't make any dent anyways, and I wouldn't want business to be, to feel discouraged, and as it is, we don't have that many, so I am definitely in favor of keeping the same. So I am definitely in favor of keeping the same.
So I share that sentiment. So does someone want to make a motion as, and we can do it as a group, doesn't have to be individually?
I move not to implement a residential factor for 2026.
Second.
Do we want, can't we do all of them as a group, Elaine?
You could, or separately.
Okay.
I think there was agreement across the board and with the recommendation.
Okay, so I'll add onto that and move to not implement an open space discount for 2026, and move not to implement a residential exemption for 2026, and not implement a small commercial exemption for 2026, and I move to implement a single tax rate for 2026, and I move to approve the Form LA 5 as presented.
Second.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second for this. It's roll call, so.
I'm ready for the roll call, but I was wondering, I had some questions. Is this the time to ask, because this is the discussion time? Just to clarify a couple of things.
Sure, you can.
Could I ask one other thing? Could you also make a motion to approve the LA 5?
We did.
Oh, you did that, sorry.
Yep, as presented.
Yeah. I wouldn't take too much time. It's just for some education, and generally, I mean, thank you for the presentation, a lot of good information. One quick question is, so we had about 10 percent increase in residential house valuation. How does it reconcile with our 2.5 percent levy limit? Because we don't do 10 percent increase on our tax base, thank God.
Are you referring to the proposition 2.5%?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a townwide proposition where the value can't exceed 2.5 percent, but an individual property can go up or down in value, you know, for any percentage number. So a property that's destroyed by fire, you know, goes down to basically a zero value, other than the foundation and the utilities that might be there. A property that is a vacant piece of land goes up 300,000 percent in value in one year because they built a brand-new colonial there that, you know, that sells for a million and a half or something like that. And other properties, you know, based on the slide that had some of the reasons, you know, we have a cyclical inspection program where we try to inspect every property in Hopkinton over the course of every 10 years. We have building permits that we look at. We have property sales, and we're trying to go through systematically every street and every house and every neighborhood in town. And when there's a sale or a number of sales on your street or in your neighborhood, they will affect the property value of your home, even if you haven't made any recent improvements. So, you know, for a, really, a variety of reasons, you know, those percentages can be different for every property.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. And one last one is, the new growth dropped significantly from 118 million to 85. Is that a seasonal or one-time thing, or do you have any more insight onto that? Should, I mean, we are worried, of course, because our revenue has gone down significantly. What is the trend? What is the reason?
Yeah, I mean, that depends on, you know, depends on the market, and it depends on economic activity and then the strength of the economy. You know, last year, we were at about 1.7 in tax dollars in new growth. This year is 1.2. We had hoped for 1.5, but we didn't hit that mark. We've already talked about using a projection of maybe 800,000 or a million in tax dollars next year. So unless we see, I mean, we still have some new construction, and we still did pretty well in new growth, you know, with the new single families that are being built and with Waterville Lane, which is Phase 4 of the trails having come online and building. But unless we see some significant commercial activity or some significant new subdivisions, then that new growth is certainly going to tail off from what it was when Legacy Farms, for example, was under full development.
Thank you. Yeah, we need more economic development. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, so now we just need the roll call vote. Amy, would you like to start?
Amy Ritter-Bush, yes.
Matt Kizner, yes.
Adam Mannan, yes.
Brian?
Brian Hurd, yes.
And Joe Clark, yes. Okay, so that's approved, and so now we also need a motion to call the special town meeting on December 4th. It looks like we need to designate a time for that. Submit an article into Town Meeting Warrant to reduce the FY '26 operating budget and to recommend that article be approved by Town Meeting, and move to sign the December 4th, 2025 Special Town Meeting Warrant. So before I get comments or a motion on that, I think it's really important for this one. I think we needed to bring up that, you know, due to the timing, we can only move forward with this if there is one, this is the one and only article. We cannot, normally, we accept other special town meeting articles, but in the interest of time and, like, it would actually, do you want to, you want to expand upon this, Elaine, the importance of it?
Because that timeline is so short, we're running some concurrent timelines here for a special town meeting, and we would have to post the warrant tomorrow, but the warrant technically is still open. And if another article is submitted, we may not be able to go forward with this on December 4th, which means that we were not able to defect the tax rate in a positive way.
And people would get paid, you know, coming off their December tax bills?
Right.
Or get charged for taxes that they shouldn't have to?
And it'd be a shame, because we don't need the money.
Can I clarify? Usually, we have to leave the warrant open for a certain number of days. We have to do that, right?
So it's still runs, but I would note that the annual town meeting warrant opens in a month, and people can start working on their articles at that point, and it's right around the corner.
Yeah. This, just to, you know, really say it clearly, this was off, you know, a meeting with the Department of Revenue on Friday morning. This is all new information. It's really important that this, that we do not have another article, where we typically would accept them openly. We need to get this done. We have a short window to do it. I don't want to see people pay for taxes after December that they don't need to.
So I agree with all that, but don't legally, if someone does submit one, don't we have to take it?
Yeah, spoke with council about that, yes, and we might have to continue or postpone the town meeting, which means no.
Okay.
We would not be able to be successful here with the change.
Definitely, we'll set the tone, but we also have to follow the charter, right?
We will follow the charter. I think the message needs to be clear, though, that, you know, while we typically welcome as many articles as possible to town meeting and special town meeting, this is a unique circumstance that keeps people from paying taxes that they don't need to pay come the end of December.
And remind them they could submit in January for May.
Exactly. In a month, the town meeting articles will open, or the warrant will open, in what, January, whatever?
January 1st.
January 1st, so it's not that people have to wait long for that. This is a unique circumstance, and I just can't, you know, say that enough, the importance around that.
Yeah, if an article comes in, we won't, it's likely we won't be able to save the money.
Now, through the chair, I couldn't agree more. We should take that time to socialize, market, and one marketing thought is how much money they are going to save if, or they'll have to pay more on an average household if we don't do this.
Yeah, I mean, it's $5.6 million. That's significant.
Probably a couple of hundred per.
And I just want to repeat that that came about because we were able to borrow money at 3 percent versus 6 percent, and because we overestimated health insurance costs, which is a really difficult thing to project. But, you know, next year, we'll try for an earlier special town meeting if that's necessary.
Thank you. Kudos to you and the administration for doing a good job and saving more money, doing better negotiation, better fiscal discipline. Thank you.
Perfect. So I will look for a motion here. I believe we can do the motion as a group. Correct? I guess the only discussion that we need is what time the special town meeting would be on December 4th, which I believe is a Thursday. So we typically are, what, 6:00 or 7:00? 7:00?
Typically, 7:00. I think we should ask the moderator.
I'm going to ask another question. Our town meetings are no longer during the week. Why is this town meeting not on a Saturday?
I don't agree with that, too.
Because of the short timeframe in which to get this information to DOR. I believe that they would be receiving it the following day, is what they had described to us.
I want to understand when our maximum deadline is there. The town voted pretty clearly this year that they expect town meetings to be on a weekend to avoid disenfranchisement.
In the holiday season, weekends may be tougher.
I'm just, you all stand before the voters, same as I do. They were very clear about this one.
Again, I go back to this is a unique circumstance. I think you bring up a very valid point.
I don't have to be right here, guys. I'm just going to remind you.
I mean, it's only the annual town meeting that's required to be on the first Saturday of May.
I get it. I think if I could randomly select 100 citizens, they would tell me their expectation is town meetings are held on Saturdays.
Okay. Elaine just clarified that, per charter, we don't, we can do this on a Thursday. There's no, there's no.
A town meeting can be called for any day.
Yeah. All right. So with that, was it 6:00, 7:00? What was?
I'm sorry, then, if special town, no, no, I'm not done then. A special town meeting can be called on any day, and I haven't been given a specific reason and why which a Saturday meeting cannot meet the requirement, and I have not heard one. I've heard the information will go to the DOR the next day. I have not heard that failure to do it by this day is prohibitive. So I'm going to ask again, if it can be held on any day, why is it not being held on the day the town has expressed it expects this meeting to be held? Help me understand. If this meeting is not held on Thursday, does it jeopardize the tax rate? Can it be held on a Saturday, and can the information be given the following Monday? Yes or no? Yes or no?
Maybe. I can't tell you yes or no, because it depends on the Department of Revenue. They told us that they would try and turn the tax rate around, the tax rate approval around the day after the special town meeting. So for, wait, so for us and for them, the earlier, the better. So if it was Saturday, and we got the information to them on Monday, we are now scheduled to do our tax billing on Tuesday. So if we didn't get the approval on Monday, could it delay the tax rate further? Yes. But that's the only answer. It's not a definitive answer, because we don't have final approval on the tax rate. We submit all the forms through Gateway, and then the Bureau of Accounts from the Department of Revenue makes the decision on whether those forms are correct and whether or not the tax rate will be approved or whether or not we have to make further changes. So the only answer I can give you, based on our discussion with them, is that they said the earlier, the better. Does it mean you can't have it on Saturday? No, but.
So obviously, I am one of five, but I have not heard anything to suggest that having the meeting on Saturday is prohibitive.
I'm good, if I could, through the chair. Holidays in December are just so, or so, weekends in December are just so busy with so many holiday events, and it's the day of the holiday stroll, so I don't think we will get the best quorum if we do it on the Saturday, the December 6th.
This was also your rationale for why town meetings shouldn't be on a Saturday, to begin with, Amy. The town voted on this.
All right, guys, I think we just need to put it to a motion, so I will look for a motion for this.
Mr. Chair, I move to call a special town meeting for December 4, 2025, at 7:00 PM.
Do you want to do all, group them all?
Oh. Sorry, Brian, you had something?
He seconded it.
I move to submit an article in the Special Town Meeting Warrant to reduce the fiscal year 2026 operating budget and to recommend that the article be approved by Town Meeting. I move to sign the December 4, 2025 Special Town Meeting Warrant.
Brian, do you accept those additional ones as a second?
Yeah, all of those are in there. Thank you.
All right, so we're going to go to roll call vote.
Shadu.
Shadu Mannan, yes.
Matt Kizner, no.
Amy Ritter-Bush, yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Joe Clark, yes. Set.
We didn't ask the moderator for his opinion.
Thank you, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Very informative. Thanks a lot.
All right. Next, we were supposed to go get an update from the Elementary School Building Committee. Something came up this evening they had to cancel, so now we will move on to consider reviewing the financial management policies, which were last reviewed in 2022. Elaine, do you want to walk us through this one?
Sure. So this is the board's adopted policy, which was developed over the years in conjunction with the Appropriation Committee as well. And it was last reviewed a couple of years ago. I think the basic change at that point was changing the name of the Select Board from Board of Selectment to Select Board, I think was the major change. So it wasn't a substantial change.
Okay. And I know this was just brought up, you know, on a recent meeting. Have we received potential inputs for what some of these changes could be so far, or is it just kind of open discussion for the board?
It was just something that was suggested that the board should review them.
General, you want to start with this one? I think you, you were the one that brought up, like, hey, it's been a couple of years since we reviewed this.
Yeah, I think, I'm just worried, it may require a little bit more time and going into so much detail by each of the areas. Are we going to do it only for our operational budget or also for capital budget?
I think, I think we're open to both. I mean, I'm certainly in agreement with you that if we need to continue this item to another night, spend some more time, you know, individually thinking about it. Anyone disagree with that?
I would really appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate you both making the suggestion. There's a lot of meat here.
Brian, any thoughts on that?
No, I'm good with that. That's fine.
All right. So then that brings us to, we will move on to, the Select Board will consider conducting its annual review of the Town Manager. Elaine, Jessica, would you like to join us? Whatever you're more comfortable with.
Welcome. Thank you. All right. So I will give you that, and.
Huh?
So I'm giving everybody their self-assessment and the combined review. And Brian has an electronic.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, is Jessica handing out the forms?
She is.
Yes, she mentioned, yeah, she mentioned you would have them electronically. Do you?
I do have them, thank you.
Yep.
So I am pleased to say that I was able to get feedback from all five members of the board. I reached out individually to gather the information regarding some of the standard questions that we have for reviews, and then they individually responded to me, and then I put all of the information on the final review with no individual identifying information. So it's all together. So Elaine also provided a self-assessment as well, which includes, like, her accomplishments, her goals, proposed goals for the coming year. And this year, there will not be goals that were evaluated simply because it was her first year, and we don't evaluate goals in the first year. So how would you like us to proceed with the review?
I think it's important to, you know, touch on the self-assessment, right? I think that's an important part of it. And then, you know, we'll go over kind of the key responsibilities, and the boards, you know, at a high level, their, the feedback on those areas. There's a lot here, there's a lot of information, so I don't think it's, you know, I don't think we can go through or want to read through all of it, but I think, like, as I look through, there's a lot of, you know, similar feedback, so if we can kind of do a summary of each one and talk about it and give Elaine a chance to kind of have some feedback and hear from her as well. Would you suggest anything differently?
Sure. Did you want to hear from her self-assessment first, before we review what the board felt like, how she performed?
I think that's fair. Any issue with that, Elaine?
I can abbreviate, though. It doesn't have to be word for word. So I just listed some things that I had accomplished in the first year, and that includes a, holding a special town meeting in November 18th of 2024. It's not something that we normally do, but all the statutory deadlines and requirements were met. The Town Manager's office is responsible for setting out the timeline, coordinating town departments, working with the article sponsors and town council, and that was also at a time when we didn't have a, an assistant Town Manager, so it was, it went fine. And then, following that, an annual town meeting on May 5th, doing the same work, but And that the May 5th, 2025 annual town meeting was a success and was accomplished in one day, although I don't take credit for that. It was a very nice, nice thing. And it saved us a lot of time in the end. But that involved also working with all the town departments, coordinating and making sure we have the closed captioners, the, the location, the copies and everything that's necessary logistically to run the, the special, the annual town meeting. In addition, I implemented the weekly town manager update that goes out via Hopkinton notices. And I think that's, my goal was to improve communication with the public and bring a sense, more of a sense of community to the town. I think we all love Hopkinton, and it's really nice to promote the great things about this community and the things that we can do together and the things that people can participate in. And also to reach out and assist people when it's necessary. And I think, you know, it's not the only way people get this information, but it's something that I'm, I'm continuing to try to work on and, you know, just kind of bring a sense of community and communication to people. And I'm always seeking people who want to send me things to put in there, so I'm happy to, to receive them at any time. Also, successful labor union negotiations. All of the MOAs have been signed, and the integrated contracts are either being prepared or being reviewed by the unions at this time. And all of the increases came in within the budget available. Completed land use, land negotiations to purchase the Kasucci property, which was voted at the 2025 annual town meeting. Completed performance reviews for all of the, the 14 individuals that report to the town manager. I continued to, on work of, we had been working, before it was town manager, we had been working on providing enhanced benefits to employees. And our employee handbook had not been amended since 2012. And it's something that had been under development for a long time with HR. And so Jessica and her team, and working with them, we finally completed that and included enhancements for employees, including paid parental leave, earlier vacation time accrual, and establishment of a sick bank. And it's those kinds of things that we can provide to employees. We can't always give the raises perhaps that private industry will give, but we can give some enhanced benefits to assist with retention and attraction of new employees. We replaced the leased spring water dispensers in Town Hall and other town buildings with dispensers that are connected to the municipal water. It's a signal that our water is clean and is good to drink. And it also came out of cost savings, $10,000 to this building alone in that year. And in addition, assumed a couple of leadership positions. I'm a board member of the Metro West 495 Partnership and chair the Metro West Veterans Service District, which is Holliston, Hopkinton, Ashland, and Medway. And then recognizing the need for continuous learning, I attended training sessions, including servant leadership, bomb threats and hoaxes, ethics, adapting public buildings for creative uses, the Chapter 30B information, fraud detection, and the municipal association annual conference and other managers' association meetings and workshops, including one for new managers. So that's a, a snapshot of, so, working with HCAM to film Hopkinton Works, which would be aired on HCAM. Filmed another one this week, so hopefully that will go out soon. And so that's some highlights, but not the entire list that I, that I put there.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think there were certainly a lot, you know, in the first year, year, year plus. So for the board, you know, Amy, any comments? Response to her?
No, I don't think so. I think I would agree with the self-assessment that that really sums up so, I mean, so many things that happened this year. I don't think I have any other comments. I seem to have two of this sheet. Is anyone missing one?
Just me.
It's funny. Oh, I have Brian's copy.
Yeah. I would highlight that as a reasonable and accurate assessment of the major accomplishments and positives. I will want to have a discussion about my personal views on those, but I think you're just asking me for a reflection on her self-assessment.
Yeah, no, I agree. And I think kudos to Elaine, first year, very successful year. And marked by your calm, steady leadership and strong commitment to effective operations, financial stewardship, and collaborative engagement. I liked how you have added new tools to the communication to the residents, the newsletter. That's been very, I think, well-received and appreciated. I hear good things about that. And it gives a good communication mechanism, which I appreciate. And, you know, in our town, respecting the residents, their voice, your communication email and other ways to connect with them, really much appreciated. And also, I think the organization of the last town meetings, the successful budget cycle completion on time and the balanced budget, working with everyone collaboratively and managing the stakeholders, managing all the priorities, shows a lot of strength, and I appreciate that as well. And I just want to look forward to working with you and as the town navigates increasingly complex issues as we see with the budget and everything that comes our way. And we want to emphasize on proactive and real-time communication. We are now in a, in many ways, a real-time social media world. So a lot of things comes up, and we want to be more and more cognizant of that and active in communication, in getting back and ensuring the transparency of our works like you are doing and further enhance your already strong performance. So thank you for all your service.
Brian?
Yeah. I think Elaine's self-assessment is very much in line with what the board's overall assessment was as well. I think Elaine's done an excellent job in her first year in the role. You never really know the job until you have it. So I'm sure some things came up that maybe she anticipated, maybe she didn't. Regardless, I think she's done an excellent job on behalf of Hopkinton, and I look forward to her continuing to grow in the role. Thank you.
Yeah. Just in summary, I, I agree. I think this was very fair representation of the work that you do. Honestly, it probably doesn't capture, you know, a lot of the little stuff that you do that most people don't realize. So I appreciate everything that you do. Want to go through kind of, you know, two, three, four, and five? Do you want to walk through those sections of the self-assessment? I think.
Oh.
Factors that aid you in accomplishing your work, areas of performance that are in need, the ones.
Sure. So in our self-assessment form, we ask employees to describe the factors that helped us in accomplishing our work and then any factors that were impediments. So I noted that the excellent teams and all the town departments have been key, and I truly value the subject matter expertise that all my colleagues possess. And, you know, I really enjoy working here and with everyone that I come in contact with and those that I don't, on a daily basis. And also, you know, time and money can sometimes be impediments to, to the work as well. There's only so many hours in a day, unfortunately.
That's the truth. Any comments from the board for that section?
No. I, I think you do an awful lot with what you were given. It sounds silly to say that $135 million budget is paper clips and elastics, but I think we are actually intimately aware that it's a lot more paper clip and elastic than it seems. And you make it go very, very far.
Amy?
No, I, I think, yeah, I think it was well stated.
I just had, give up the wonderful work. And do you have anything in mind that we can help? Of course, we talk all the time and we have meetings all the time. But anything you want to project here that you'd want or you'd expect the board to support you more or can step in to do more?
Well, I think that, that gets into the, the next section, which talks about, you know, a neat, you know, things that areas of need for development and growth. And I think communication, both internal and external, is extremely important. So I look forward to speaking with all of you, perhaps more than I have in the first year. I think, you know, it's important to keep in touch and, and communicate in that way, but also with the public and with others as well. I don't know what I don't know, and I want to know.
Brian?
I don't know what she doesn't know either, so I don't know if I should say anything else. I'm all, I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
Perfect. Yep. Yeah, I have no, I have no additional comments. So the next area is what? Areas of performance that determined are in need of development and growth.
Yeah. So that was the additional communication with everyone. And then just continuing, you know, learning about areas that I may not have spent a lot of time in before, including municipal finance is one of those and other. You know, the laws change all the time. I think it's really important to keep up on the changes in the law and perhaps work to advocate for the community for changes that, that town thinks should be made as well on the state level. So I, I'm interested in continuing in that regard.
I, I think those are, those are perfect areas. Like, I think we all individually need to work on those things in general. I know I certainly have those same goals for myself in my career. So I don't have any additional comments. Board? Shadow?
I think those are great objectives and certainly help.
Yeah. Two quickies on this. I appreciate that you highlighted communication. Is it something I receive a lot of very positive feedback about? So I think it's interesting you chose to highlight it as an opportunity. What I might suggest then, since you're thinking of it that way, in corporate America, we call this the voice of the customer. The customer in this case is the town. Are they getting what they want from our communications? Which ones are they accessing? Which ones are generating value for them? Please don't hear that as an insinuation. They aren't valuable. I read them. They absolutely are. But now that you've enhanced the communication efforts, let's go back and let's ask them, and then maybe we can tailor based on what they're telling us they're looking for. And that really goes to the second point I want to highlight. And I thought it was interesting that more than a few of us made this point, and it's a very positive one. We want to hear from you. I'll speak for myself, but I'm not the only one who gave this comment in here. You have so much knowledge and strategic insight into what makes the town work. I know you are very keen on being our liaison and that we are the five, we chart the path, and that you are our partner in the town administration. I view you as so much more than that, Elaine. I think you have an awful lot of strategic insight, and I want to know what you think should be happening here. I can't say I'm always going to agree. You know I'm not. But you're in this position, not just because of your capability as an administrator steward, you're in this position because of your subject matter expertise and your demonstrated strategic leadership. I expect and hope that in the coming year, you are going to be more comfortable bringing items to this board that we have not requested, that you and town staff are elevating and believe need to be with us. Because I think we've been underserving that piece of our charge and supporting you as the administrator and senior leader of town staff. And that's my last one. I'd love to just talk about succession planning, and I don't know that that's an opportunity so much as it is potentially just a goal and something we can help with. I want to make sure you have the support you actually need to do the job you've been charged with.
Thank you.
Amy?
I'll just add, and I think we all mentioned it in our comments, that your communication has been great this year. And it definitely, it's more your strength than it was the previous town managers, and I think we all appreciate that. And then the, the part about seeking more additional training for educational opportunities in the finance area, I guess just let us know if that, if you need help from us, if there needs to be more budget for training or if the trainings are free from the MMA or, or the state. But let us know if you need our support.
Yep.
Brian?
I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Yep. I'm just, you know, very supportive of this. I think your communication, you know, firsthand has been great. So I, I agree with the, it's interesting that you put it on there. But if not, we'll, we'll move on to like the goals and objectives that you put, and then that'll kind of bring us into what the board viewed as goals and priorities as well. So.
Okay. Thought about some areas that could work with the board on and that need to be done in the next couple of years and perhaps even beyond. First is the, the select board has set a strategic plan as a goal. So I think it's important that I work on that. And I think this goal is going to take a few years and may require some consultant services at some point. But we need to scope out what that strategic plan is, what it's going to be, and then move forward with some aspects of that. So I'd like to work on that this year. The second one is we need to think about a plan for reuse of Elmwood School. Whether it's reused, whether it's not reused, what we're going to do with Elmwood School. It's going to be turned over to the town when Charles Wood School opens, so the time to start planning is now. And so an evaluation of the building, the land and the town needs to be undertaken as we determine its future. We did tour that recently, and so I have a clearer idea of, of what we need to do as far as assess what the town wants to do with it and what's important. And the third goal is to, regarding downtown Hopkinton. So now that the Main Street project is nearly finished, there's several areas where coordination, new policies and responsibilities need to be determined. Thinking about maintenance of landscaping and hardscaping, who's going to do what? Banner policy and the permitting process, both for banners that go across the street, which is similar to what we had before. But also now we have new banner poles with small banners on them. And other communities have adopted policies for that. It's a free speech issue, but it's also a permitting issue. So there's some issues of policy that need to be worked out and addressed with the board on that. Ideally, we could get that going quicker than the other two because now that they're there, people are asking about using them. So we have to think about a policy pretty quickly. Oh, and the other thing I wanted to mention in that same goal is some economic development and tourism focused on the downtown. I've been working with the Historical Commission and the Historical Society on doing a self-guided walking tour of historic resources in the downtown. We've been talking about a cultural district, and there's other opportunities there that we can really focus some attention on the downtown as a focal point for the community.
Perfect. Matt, you want to start with this one? Comments, feedback?
I love all of these. I have very little to add here other than I really want to talk broader staff. So one of the things that's come up as I've been trying to have my skip levels in my liaison assignments, risk to new and emerging skills in the broader community.
assignments, risk to new and emerging skills in the broader community. I see Director Reed has snuck into the room, and I'm thinking about the emerging field of water purification and the exciting career in microplastic removal. This is all to say that what it means to ensure that the town has the skilled professionals it needs today and tomorrow has absolutely changed in 2025 from where it might have been the last time we did succession planning and risk assessment like that. I want to make sure for critical positions, and I will trust you to identify what those are, that we really do have an internal successor in mind. And if we don't, let's start talking about what that looks like, because in all cases, I don't think this is an easy to solve, wave-a-one problem. Kerry may come back and tell me that every town needs a water purification specialist, and I'm going to have to pay a lot more money. Let's start having that conversation in the open so we can start highlighting to the town what it means to continue to provide the top-tier services that they have become accustomed to, expect, demand, and deserve. And I want to make sure you and the town staff are in the position to deliver that, because I know that's going to be the expectation.
Amy?
No, I think these are good goals, and I'm happy to see us planning for the reuse of Elmwood School now, or not now, but earlier than, we waited too long to do that for Center School, and the public talks about it still. So I'm glad that we're going to be working on Elmwood. And then, yeah, I agree, the downtown Hopkinton, we need to focus on that now that the Main Street project is done and the cultural district would be great. So I think those are good goals to work on.
Yeah, no, I like the proposed goals. I think those are very well-written and well-thought-out, very much needed. So I'm good with that. Just one quick one, the MWRA-related one and the water-related works that's going on, if we can include it somewhere. I know we don't want to go beyond three. Something to think about, but I know that work will continue anyways. But I think that's of, you know, critical importance as well. Thank you.
Brian?
I really like the idea of getting into Elmwood School. Personally, I think we need to find a way to turn that into a revenue opportunity for the town. We can't save every school that we've ever sent our kids to over the years, and I think that one's primed for some other type of development. Thanks.
Perfect. Yeah, I agree. I think these are important goals to look at, especially as a lot of people alluded to earlier than, rather than wait. So, thank you. I think, you know, Jessica, as we move on to like the board's feedback, do you want to walk us through these, since it's kind of a compilation of everyone's feedback and nothing specifically?
Sure. Did you want me to read through them?
If you could summarize them, because they are...
Yeah, well, generally speaking, it's all very positive feedback around the different areas. The areas that were evaluated for key position responsibilities were overall management of town departments and staff, budget process and town meeting preparation, maintaining collaborative processes with the police and fire chiefs and school department, contract negotiations and collective bargaining, addressing resident concerns and needs, and conducting town business with appropriate transparency and responsiveness. I found in all of them that there was a very positive response to the level of responsiveness in the very first year, that she's doing a really great job managing effectively, meeting expectations, and proactively engaging staff, the community, doing a great job. If you'd like me to go into kind of more detail, I can, but generally speaking, that was the feedback in all of those, those points, all of those responsibilities.
I don't think you need to go into...
Yeah.
I'll kind of give the board a minute if they want to call something out or anything related to it. But I would agree that was the summary in general to those areas. So, Amy, you want to start?
Yeah, like I read through them as we've been sitting here, and we all had very similar comments and highlighted similar areas, so I don't think there's really too much more to discuss. It looked like we were all pretty close together on the rating as well.
Yeah, I'd echo Amy. I actually really enjoyed getting to see everyone's comments and how uniform they were. I think that speaks wildly positively of you, Elaine, because we are five completely different individuals. My only ask back to you, please make sure we give you actual goals this year. I was the pedant who was uncomfortable evaluating you as either positive or negative against expectations, because you didn't have approved goals. And where I come from, you have to have approved goals to exceed or fail. So please make sure we put you in a position to exceed or not exceed your goals next year. That's a goal for us.
Sounds good.
Yeah, no, I resonate the same as my colleagues. Wonderful year, wonderful, great first year. And it's interesting to see we all are pretty much talking about the similar achievements and issues, because they really do stand out. So keep up the wonderful work. In terms of goals, to clarify on Mr. Kizner's comment, I think the first year is not something that, Jessica, you may help clarify where we set the goals. Is that right?
So typically here with employees, upon hire or promotion, the first year, essentially the goal is to get acclimated to the job. There aren't, it's too hard to learn the job fully and have stretch goals at the same time. So that first year doesn't typically have goals, and then we set the goals for each year going forward.
Thank you. That's my understanding. So I just wanted to make sure that not having specific goals was not an oversight?
Nope, it was deliberate.
And going forward, we will now have more specific goals like we always do. Again, wonderful work. Thank you. Looking forward to working with you.
Brian?
I think I've said my piece. I think she's doing a great job.
Sorry, Joe, if I can, I promise I'll be super quick. I had meant to say this just as a positive. I'm looking at Lance. One of the things that I think we often overlook in leadership is how difficult it is to have a strong second person with you. It's one of the most important signs of a leader is that humility to have someone that you believe is capable of doing portions of your job. Lance applied for your job. There are an awful lot of people who would have never wanted him anywhere near this position. Not only did you want him, you recommended, you advocated, you developed, and it continues to be a wildly effective partnership. To me, that is to your extreme credit for being willing to do that, putting any conflict, if there was any, aside, and just delivering X and value on this partnership. So thank you for being truly humble in your leadership. We are very grateful.
Thank you.
I may add to that. It's been my pleasure working with Elaine, and I, you know, I thank the town for the opportunity to be here. So it's been great, and she is every bit as nice and smart as she seems, so it's not an act. And I just, you know, she's just a phenomenal resource. I've just learned so much in my time here, and not only just her knowledge of the community, but, you know, her, her knowledge around public administration in general. So she's a huge resource to the town, in my opinion.
And I'm learning from Elaine as well, so it's great.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I can't say it anymore than what's already been said. I'm in complete agreement. So like moving forward, I think the next section, since there weren't goals, was summary of key accomplishments. I felt like your self-assessment really covered those. I don't feel the need to go through like the boards. A lot of these things are the same thing.
Yep.
And so I think we were all in agreement on how much you've done, and I don't think it's even all captured on this. So I think, you know, Jessica, do you want to walk us through part four? Like, just a summary of, you know, suggestions?
Suggestions for improvement. So implementing an online permitting and licensing process to greatly improve user experience for residents and businesses. It has been talked about for a few years, but would love to see it fully implemented. Let us know what the Select Board can do to help you. Continue working on making town documents ADA accessible before the April 2027 deadline for Title II compliance. The town has improved greatly on this, but some content is still not accessible. Let us know what we can do to help. Ambiguity and roles and responsibilities for the board, town manager, oversight therein, and influence on broader town actions has been a source of consistent churn since joining the board. If a department reports the town manager and the town manager to the board, the department indirectly reports to the board. Continue to look for new alternative ways of doing things in town. Elaine has so much experience and history with Hopkinton, and she should feel confident in her abilities to break out of her comfort zone. We've spent a lot of time and energy on corrective actions since I joined the board, but very little looking prospectively and strategically at preventative actions. What can we do to get ahead of known or likely to emerge issues? How can, can we as a town leadership and executive function be partnering strategically for mutual goals? What does Ms. Lazarus and her staff think these, those ideas are, and how is she bringing them forward? Is this understood to be an exception of the role? As the most senior face of the board's oversight to the town staff, do they feel empowered to bring ideas through you to us or us directly? They should. As public expectations evolve, particularly in a fast-paced social media environment, continuing to expand timely updates and real-time communication would help address residents' concerns earlier and reduce the spread of misinformation. While transparency has been strong, providing more detailed public explanations during major initiatives or periods of rapid change can help residents better understand decision-making and reduce confusion during escalated situations. Elaine could be more proactive in the messaging of hot topics of the day with the community rather than letting others control the narrative. The Select Board and town manager should not allow that. A position should be stated and why. Continuing to build deeper, more frequent touchpoints with community groups, boards, and residents will further reinforce trust and encourage collaborative problem-solving as changes, challenges arise. The town manager should be viewed as the sixth member of the Select Board with no vote, but should share views and ideas with the board. So that's all the feedback.
Perfect. I'll kind of go first. You know, I look at this, I think it's a very good sign when your feedback or areas of improvement are more like new goals or, you know, new initiatives as opposed to like personal development or something. I think that's a great sign, especially in your first year. So I think there's, there's a lot in here, like it's important, and more, you know, responsibilities as opposed to, you know, skills or, like I said, personal development. So I'll just, I'll leave it there. I think, Shadul, if you want to share?
Oh, I think these are good ones. And again, these are more, as Mr. Chair mentioned, to expand your reach and horizon from where you are, which is great. So our expectations goes higher. But that said, I think obviously we all agree that you've done a wonderful job, doing a great job, and these are some of the things I think would be also good to keep on your radar for the days to come. And these are kind of blended with the issues that we are facing, with the hot topics and challenges that we are facing. And I think you mentioned it well, that, you know, overarching reach and overarching communication with the stakeholders, with the town residents is key. And it's not to say about your personal communication, it's more about, I think, town administration communication framework, how we reach today, and as the world is becoming more and more dynamic, how can we work to advance that further, to expand the reach and meet certain expectations that are also growing out there. So good luck with all these, and we are here to support.
Thank you.
Matt?
Year one and any job is survival. Congratulations, you have survived. Now the fun part starts, because year two is when we encourage you to dream and get ambitious. And I really hope that you are catching a key theme in here, is that we want you to do this, but we do not expect you to do it alone, and we do not want you to do it alone. I really want to be having more conversations with you about how we can grow, empower, and activate the staff beneath you. I think too often, we, myself, I'll speak for me, it's really easy to look at you and Lance and view you as the apparatus of the town, because you are who we interact with. And that's an unfair burden to the two of you, and it's also a misleadership development opportunity for the people beneath you to get to interact with us and share some of their ideas, too. So I want to make sure we're partnering with you to be an active conduit to that growth and that the people in town who work for you believe that that's something we're interested in. Their voice matters to me, too.
Thank you.
Amy?
I don't think I really have any additional comments under part four. Like, I read through them and agree with the suggestions.
Brian?
Yeah, they go back to what I said early on about growing, continuing to grow in the second year and beyond. So I think the, those ideas speak to that, and I'm certain, certain that Elaine will.
Awesome. I think that brings us on to the overall summary. You know, I, I think it's all been shit.
Yeah, it is.
Throughout this, it's, it's been a very positive experience, I think. You know, the, the board's comments, we're all in kind of agreement with that. I think it's a great sign for, you know, your first year in a job. I think you went however many months without an assistant town manager. That's a, it's a really tough task. You know, you know what that job entails, you know, firsthand. So I would have nothing, nothing to add there. Just, I think it's really great work from everything I've seen, and I'd just say, keep it up, and, you know, we support you. But I won't speak for the board if anyone has any additional comments.
No, no, speak for the board. Keep it up, we support you.
Thank you. And I appreciate all of your feedback. I'll do what I can, and then some.
Thank you, Elaine. Thank you for your candor and your review, too.
So at this point, did we vote the rating and authorize the chair to sign?
So we, the average rating combined is 3.8 out of four. I mean, 3.8 out of five. So it's rounded to the achieves and sometimes exceeds expectations. So then you would have to decide if that's going to be the official rating for her.
Okay. So could I make a motion to assign the town manager a rating of four, achieves and sometimes exceeds expectations?
Second that? Thank you.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Any comments? I agree with that, so I think we need to go to a roll call vote.
Shadul Manon, yes.
Amy, ready to wish yes?
Matt Kizner, yes.
Brian?
Brian Hurd, yes.
Joe Clark, yes.
And do we need to authorize the chair to sign, or that's just how it happens? Like, it has to be signed, right?
Yeah, I don't think we need to...
I don't think you need to vote on it.
Don't need to vote on that, okay.
There's no motion for that.
All right. And we have to give these back to you, is that right?
So then, how do you typically handle what the, like, in terms of the pay increase based on? Is that handled separately?
I would guess a separate discussion. I don't think, we're ready for that tonight. Does that go in executive session?
In executive session?
I thought it goes to the executive session.
I would have guessed executive.
Being in line with the rating that we do with the other, okay. Yeah, I'll look at the language. It, it may say that, that it's in keeping what we do with non-contracted employees in terms of their, their rating for their reviews. There is a percentage attached to it.
It's the same percentage that other employees receive.
Are you happy or good with that? We can always have a special discussion and...
I'm fine with that.
So that, my other question would be, do you need to make a decision on whether or not it would, it would go be retroactive to her one-year date of September 10th?
Okay.
For an effective...
I think that makes sense.
We've done the same thing for the other ones.
That's consistent with what we've done in the...
That's what we do with other, other employees.
I haven't heard anyone saying anything differently.
Okay.
Do you need us to vote on that?
Do we make, I, I make a motion to apply the rate adjustment consistent with the rating for other non-contract employees to Ms. Lazarus, reflecting the beginning of her tenure as defined as September 1st, 2020, September 9th, 2025?
Second that?
Okay, motion and a second, roll call.
Amy, ready to wish yes?
Comment, comment, please.
Yep.
Do we know what that percentage is?
3.5%.
Thank you.
Matt Kizner, yes.
Shadul Manon, yes.
Brian?
Brian Hurd, yes.
Joe Clark, yes. All right, awesome.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity, and I appreciate working with the board and...
Thank you.
And the public's support and help as well.
Thank you, Elaine.
Jessica, thank you for your support on the process, by the way. This is really good. The transparency, the collaboration, putting everything together at the end and then discussing it like this. I really appreciated the process.
Thank you.
Do we hand these back to you? Because they're part of the personal file, yeah.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
And while we have some airspace here, I have a card that the robot gentleman left us for giving them a bib.
Oh, thanking for the marathon.
Yeah, I let them run because they didn't know if they'd actually got their bib.
So next, we're going to move on to the, consider appointing its representatives to the Charter Review Committee, Appointing Committee, and the direct appointee to the Charter Review Committee. So I believe we have a few applicants in the House. I appreciate you guys for sticking around. You want to come join us? We'll, we'll do this as quickly as possible. You can all come up. Join us, Jean.
And Connor, too?
Welcome.
Thank you.
We'll do this quickly. Elaine, I was going to have them introduce themselves, express their interest in why they're applying, and...
I just want to note, I think, Jean, you've already been appointed by the...
Yeah.
By the Appo-... The Appo-ration Committee met last week and appointed...
But I'll just sit here and listen.
Even better. Perfect.
Okay.
Peter, you want to go first?
Well, good evening, Peter. Memo zero, Sanctuary Elaine. I'm an applicant for the Charter Review Committee. I, I stand here as an elected official in both the Board of Assessors and the Planning Board, and I'm looking to hopefully lend my skills and experience as attorney to serving on the Charter Review Committee as well. My understanding, it's a fairly large, significant undertaking, and it's something I'm willing to take on and hopefully do some good for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Connor Deegan, 48 Hillcrest Drive. So I, I just want to make clear, too, that I've thrown my name in, because there's a, seems a very small number of people who have applied. So I wanted to make sure that not just you folks, but also the other appointing authority was not in a, a poor position to make a decision, not able to be selective on the process. You know, for me, I just say that I think I bring a, a unique perspective with it and that I have the, the benefit of being a resident as well as someone who works as a department head in Town Hall, as an elected official as well, and a, you know, as I hope to be a continued community leader. I followed the last 2016 process very closely, and, you know, I've had the chance through my years serving in Town Hall to see things that work, things that don't, and to hear the concerns of other town staff and volunteers of problems that we've faced over the course of the last 10 years. So, you know, for me, it's really just a case of making sure that we have more experienced voices in the room who want to make sure that we suss out every possibility as we review how we can make this charter work for the next 10 years. Thank you.
Perfect. You know, I'll just kind of start, share my opinions, you know, know you all from town, you're, how active you are.
So, you know, for me, it's really just a case of making sure that we have more experienced voices in the room, who want to make sure that we suss out every possibility as we review how we can make this charter work for the next 10 years. Thank you.
Perfect. You know, I'll just kind of start, share my opinions, you know, know you all from town, how active you are, and, you know, my biggest question in general would be, you know, to ask people if they know what they're signing up for, understand the commitment. I think everyone here, you know, does know that, so I personally don't have any questions. I'll kind of leave it to the board.
I know, I know both of you and your wonderful work for the town, and impressed by your background. I just want to thank for stepping forward. This is a very important task, and we are lucky to have your expertise offered, so I definitely support it.
Thank you.
Could each of you briefly summarize for me what you view as the greatest opportunity or need for revision in the charter process?
Are you, me?
I'm asking each of the three of you to choose...
I thought you said the two, sorry.
Can each of the three of you please briefly summarize for me what you believe to be the biggest item of concern or in need of revision for the coming charter process?
I'll start out, just to mix it up a little bit. You know, I think one of the big things that we saw in the last Charter Review process was actually the, and it occurred, the need for that public input as well, to see what we aspire to be over the next 10 years. You know, I think we have a lot of discussions on the efficiency of how our town government works. We have positions that are not necessarily doing the jobs they're supposed to do. We have processes that hamper both the board and town staff ability to do their jobs. I think it's just a good practice to review every aspect of how our government works while we do this. It's not, it doesn't really behoove us to leave a stone unturned in this situation. As much as it might be easier, and sometimes the status quo certainly is, you know, sometimes we have to look at how we can potentially make changes. And if, at the end of the day, if it's not a palatable charter, then it gives us more of a headache when we try to go to town meeting and eventually the ballot. So it's also important that this has to be something that the voters can stomach when we bring it up. So even the reform we bring has to be something that's reasonable.
I think that the simplest answer to that question, I think, is that, based on what I saw from the last time around 10 years ago, is that it's very much driven by what the stakeholders think are important in terms of what the other town bodies, and also more importantly, what the public input is. And I think that's going to really drive what sort of, you know, what is the best sort of service model that we have for our town, and sort of what areas would require some improvement. As I sit here, you know, I think that, you know, one thing that I took from the 2016 process was that there was a lot of talk, from my perspective, about assuring that there is transparency in the budgeting process, and assuring that the voters had adequate information well in advance of annual town meeting. I suspect that, I'd imagine I would hear a lot about that, if I'm fortunate enough to be appointed to this committee. I can't overlook the fact that there's been an awful lot of discussion about licensing authority. Perhaps that might be something that'd be touched upon as well. My overall point is that, what I would bring to this committee would be, is to assure that the stakeholders, and more importantly, the public are heard, and this is a transparent process, and that would be the most important part of it. So I think it's going to be driven by them, driven by the community as a whole.
I mean, I echo a lot of what you all said. One of the reasons, I mean, the Appropriations Committee has to have a liaison, but one of the reasons that I volunteered to do it is, I think I'm one of the few people who was on the last review that still lives in town, and I thought that some continuity might be helpful. And so, as I think back to the last process, I think the input of town council was critical. We sort of started by reviewing input from all of the town departments and other committees about what challenges they were experiencing that were rooted in the charter. But I also think that, you know, just as in 10 years ago, in the ensuing 10 years, the town has continued to grow exponentially. Technology has changed a lot. So I think, you know, there are probably a lot of things that just need a refresh or need to be more fitting with our current population and technology needs. But I think, obviously, I agree with all of you that public input is really critical, and we should think very carefully at the beginning of the process about making sure that there are opportunities all along the way to provide summaries and hear good feedback and all of that. So it was a lot of work. So you know that, but I think, certainly very valuable, and I think it's, you know, this is one of the benefits of living in a town where you get to rule your own government or create your own government, so.
Really reaping what I sow here, I asked three of you to try and distinguish your own interests and reflect your personal experience and desire here, and all three of you gave me a selfless answer about the need for transparency. There was no line between the three of you. I find it very frustrating. Thank you.
I did want to just add, we did have another applicant from yesterday, to Steve Snow, and I don't think he's on Zoom, but I don't know if someone, I mean, we can all read what he wrote in his application, if we want.
Yeah, let's, we'll come back to that after.
Okay.
How many seats do we have? Sorry, how many seats do we have?
So, there are seven total, but we appoint one, and then the others will be appointed by a joint committee.
If I may.
Yep.
Appoint one of these three?
Oh, well, not Jean, because she's already been appointed.
So, through the chair, I'm putting my town clerk hat on for a sec here. So, you're right, it is the way that the additional members would be appointed. There is one appointed by Appropriations, which is Jean, one will be appointed by the School Committee, and then one appointed by you, and then the last one is a joint committee of elected officials that will appoint the remaining members.
And the one appointed by us, Connor, that's not a select board member?
It is not stated in the charter whether it is or is not, so it is entirely at your discretion.
So it could be, if one of us is interested.
Are we, are we looking for a resident pedant and wordsmith? I could be persuaded. Are you suggesting, Brian, that you do believe this is a boy-level responsibility? Because my arm feels twisted. I'm hearing you. I'm following your leadership.
I'm trying to figure out what, what are the rules around the appointments? I thought, but I could be wrong, I thought a member of the select board had to be on the Charter Review Committee, but that's not the case. That's fine, too. I just want to understand the rules.
That was under the old version. There was a member who was appointed.
I mean, candidly, I want it to be, and the reason you're not reviewing mine is because I didn't bother to submit one, assuming that I would get to discuss my own candidacy at a time of my choosing here.
I don't have any questions. I know Connor, Jean, and Peter very well, and I'm familiar with their work.
And so, again, just to clarify, tonight, we're doing one for the Charter Review Committee, but we're also doing someone for the Charter Review Appointing Committee as well.
Which does have to be one of us.
And one will serve on that temporary committee.
Okay, that makes me feel a little better. Thank you.
We do have the charter here, if it helps to read that section.
Oh, God, no. No, we just got a line. Don't give us any more information.
I pulled up the sentence, because it's so complicated.
Two candidates, and we are appointing two.
No, we're appointing one. The second motion that we're going to make tonight is we're going to designate a select board member to be on the Appointing Committee, not on the...
Oh, okay.
Well, I'll be appointing committee for that next round, for the final person.
Yeah. So I would be happy to make a motion to appoint Peter Memo as our representative on the Charter Review Committee.
Yep, I did, I'm sorry.
Second, yes.
Okay. I did want to call out what Amy said, just in the spirit of fairness. We did have a third applicant who's not present in the room. Steve Snow and his interest in serving were to preserve core values of the town, so...
So we have three candidates.
Three candidates for one spot.
Gotcha.
Okay. So there was a motion and a second. Open up for any discussion before we go to roll call vote. Any comments from...
Just that these are incredibly strong candidates. Some choose in between aces.
Brian, any comments?
I would love to see Connor make his way to this committee as well. I think he'd bring an awful lot of experience and knowledge and passion for the role, so maybe the Appointing Committee can consider that as they go down the path with other candidates.
That was my thought as well, that Connor will be on that committee.
Yes, so this pool of people will continue on in the process.
Yes.
Oh, it's like Survivor. So, motion and a second, roll call.
Shadur? Shadur Manon, yes.
Matt Kizner, yes.
Amy Ritter Bush, yes.
Brian?
Brian Herr, yes.
Joe Clark, yes. Peter, congrats. Connor?
Thank you. Keep my name on, it's fine.
I fully expect to see you.
Aren't you on the Appointing Committee?
I'm on the Appointing Committee, yes.
Okay, so that's going to be awkward.
Yeah. If I need to recuse myself, I need to recuse myself.
Yeah.
Multiple members.
Thank you, guys, for sticking around tonight.
You won't be able to vote on yourself at the other one?
I don't know, I can, I could recuse. I don't necessarily have to.
You're about to watch me try to vote on myself.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and so now, this is the other side of it. The one board member will be on the Appointing Committee.
Yep. So I'll express my interest pretty openly here. I don't think it's going to shock any of you that I am wildly passionate about this topic, and while I recognize that this is not to do the work, Brian, I promise I recognize that, it does have a large say in the sort of people who are going to be there, and it feels like a great opportunity to channel some of my energy and availability into ensuring that this future-looking task is executed the way we are hoping it will be done.
I will volunteer that I would also be interested in serving as our rep on the committee, but I really wanted to be on the Charter Review Committee myself in 2017 and didn't get picked, so I thought this would be my way to contribute. But it is, you know, it's just, it's probably just one meeting that we'll have, right? Whoever it is, yeah.
Sorry, can you say that again? I missed, I actually missed what you said.
I would be interested in being on the Appointing Committee, because I really wanted to be on the Charter Review Committee 10 years ago and did not get picked, and so I thought this would be something, I feel very busy now that I could do it.
All right, so you're both interested, Shadur?
Both are great candidates, so we can decide on them.
Yep. Brian, thoughts? Did you hear that?
Is Mr. Manon interested in serving?
If there's a need for serving, I would be interested in serving, but I, I'm thinking, this is, Brian, for, for our representative who will vote to appoint, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And for that, we have two candidates. I would be interested in serving the Review Committee itself.
Okay.
But probably, me being in the Appointment Committee would not be a good thing if I want to serve there.
Got you.
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I think we've got two good candidates. I don't have an opinion on this, so I will look for a motion.
Chair, I move that Amy Ritter Bush be appointed to the committee.
Second, yes.
Halfway through talking, but okay.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Does someone have something to say?
I was making a motion when Brian interrupted me, but that's fine. It's okay.
Sorry, I'm remote here, it's a little awkward. Thanks.
All right, so then, if no one has anything to say, we go to roll call.
So I will simply state, then, that if I am not selected here, I will be pushing to be on the committee itself. At some point, I'm going to suggest to the five of you that you're going to have to find a way to get me involved, and the longer you wait to get me involved, the more involved I will ultimately be, because there will be less and less places for me to get engaged. I'm not going to take no for an answer here.
Okay. Let's go to roll call vote.
Shadur Manon, yes.
Matt Kizner, no.
Amy Ritter Bush, yes.
Brian?
Brian Herr, yes.
Joe Clark, yes. All right.
Before we leave the topic, I just want to mention, there's still vacancies, and people can submit applications still to the Review Committee.
And the School Committee will pick theirs this week, I guess.
This week, yes.
Thank you.
All right, Elaine, Town Manager report.
Okay. Because actually, you know, if you are not on the Appointing Committee, if you're going to apply.
I don't think anybody cares. They're going to vote for me or they're not. Don't suggest an ethical quandary where one is numbered and presented.
Town, Main Street Corridor project update. So paving will be complete, or is complete by the end of today. Winter cleanup will be complete by the end of the day Thursday this week. This will include removing any unnecessary cones and barrels and cleaning up behind Center School. Amarela will be off-site until Thursday. The landscaping sub will return to stake the remainder of the trees. There are two off-road projects that Amarela may request to do this winter, and that's the 35 Main Street driveway and a drain manhole in the Hillers Cleaners parking lot. Otherwise, they will plan to return after the marathon and complete all the work by June of 2026. So it was really nice to see the paving this week, and it's a much smoother road to ride on now.
And is that done, or they have to come back again tomorrow, or, so today's Tuesday, right?
There's some additional cleanup that's occurring, and I haven't been there to see if there's additional curbing or anything else that needs to be adjusted, but everything should be, should be pretty much done.
Okay.
Is there, is there any reason, is there no way for the paving to be done prior to the marathon? Time of the year, just the work that left needed to be done? I just wanted to clarify.
I don't know the answer to that, but we can find out for the next update.
I think it's interesting to know.
Yep.
Anyone else comments?
I'd love to just have a discussion in the wake of this about just general traffic management in town. I cannot tell you how many angry phone calls, texts, and pictures of traffic jams I have gotten in the past two weeks. I had one daycare pickup this week take me 75 minutes. There is no reason anything in our town should take 75 minutes door-to-door.
No comments?
Brian, comments?
I'm all set. I think we're getting really close here, the center of town with Verizon in the polls, just wrapping up now is, is the last piece of this puzzle. The markings, the striping, the yellow lines, white lines, all that, there'll be temporary markings of some sort. As I understand it, they cannot paint at the temperatures that we have now, so that'll also be something on the west side of town that will get done in the spring.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, just a quick update on the MW Ray Project. With respect to the project design, Par Corporation, our consultant, is currently working on the source viability analysis and its associated costs and technical aspects. There'll be a team meeting with the town in December in advance of submission to the Water Resources Commission. And just a reminder that one of the board's future agenda items is to select its liaison to the negotiations for the Town of Southborough IMA. Those negotiations are currently paused while the permitting advances, so there's no need to do that right away, but it's important to have someone identified at some point for when they resume. So would they want to consider someone at this meeting, or a future meeting?
So I think, this has been on the report for a couple of weeks, and we haven't had, and I believe usually at this point, Mr. Herr recuses himself, but I think we haven't had, you know, the other four of us in the room. So I just want to ask quickly, who has interest in being the liaison for the IMA?
For the Southborough. I would, I wouldn't mind being the liaison, but if someone else wants to do it, it's okay, too.
Yeah, I think Amy would be a great candidate.
Chase some water in store this year.
I don't feel the need to do it. I, you know, after some, like, previous meetings and stuff, I said I would still be involved, if you don't mind. I have no issue being the liaison.
Okay.
Good experience, I trust you.
So, I mean, if that's the case, then I'll make a motion to appoint Amy Ritter Bush as the board's liaison. IMA negotiations with the Town of Southborough for the M and R connection.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, so we need roll call.
Shadur Manon, yes.
Matt Kizner, yes?
Amy Ritter-Bush, yes.
Joe Clark, yes, and Brian Herr is recused. I'm sure he'll be back in a minute. All right. Check that off. All right, Elaine?
And there are no Town Department position vacancies for posting, but I do want to note the passing of Lou Saken, who was our Sealer of Weights and Measures for many years, and so at some point, we'll be, we'll be posting that position, but for right now, we're not quite ready to do that. But, you know, he's, he had a long history of service to the community, and well, he'll be missed, or he's already missed. And was Adam all set?
Any comments from the board, or we can move right on to liaison reports? All right. Would you like to start?
Not much on the liaison. We'll hear from the ESBC chair in the next session. Just to report that I had the opportunity to attend the Veterans Celebration event. It was wonderful, highly, I think, elevated with all the veterans and great, it was a great event, very nicely organized and very well participated. We had great participation from the residents, and it was a weekday, so it was wonderful to see the veterans, very uplifting.
Yeah, a couple of quickies here. DPW, as Director Reed noted, Eric Cardy's last day is on the 1st of December. Thank you again for your 40 years of service, Eric. There's going to be an open house from 10 to 12 on the last day, so come down and thank him for his service, and don't call him old. Winter parking is now in effect. Please be aware of 15 November through 15, I believe, April, quote me or don't, but there is no overnight parking in the town from, I believe, 1:00 to 6:00 a.m. Speaking of overnight parking in the town and challenges with the winter, boy, would the DPW like to give you some money if you have a giant blade on the end of your truck and you're willing to risk life and limb for the streets of Hopkinton. Please let Director Reed know if you're willing to be a plow subcontractor, and be aware as of the 24th of November, that Church Street has moved to a one-way. From a library perspective, are you a true crime podcast fan? You may want to consider joining the Evidence Locker, a true crime group which has recently had its first meeting at the library. You may have also noticed some frustrating issues with the library catalog recently that had to do with some changes that CW Mars made on their end. We fix things. The searches should look the way they are supposed to search now. Last but not least, I think it was important to highlight that there were almost 100 new library patrons in the month of October, but only 1,700 patrons overall. So that's about a 7% new patron. I think that's going to continue to go up as we get into the holiday months, but I take that as a sign that people are continuing to discover the enhanced services that we are providing at the library. I take that as a really positive feedback loop. Thank you.
I don't have too much to report. I just was going to acknowledge the CPC and the Housing Authority have been working together to resolve some issues with the Housing Authority's grant application, but it sounds like we'll be able to move forward. CPC has approved a grant, what are they calling it? A, an updated grant agreement, and then CPC has approved, and now we'll go on to the Housing Authority for them to approve. It's like the project will likely be able to move forward.
Brian?
I'm all set for now, thank you.
I have new, no new updates either. Future board agenda items, last meeting, we did some cleanup. We kind of shortened the list. Is there anything else that we talked about adding? See on here. I will take that silence, or I'll give people another minute.
Well, we can cross out designate liaison for Southborough IMA.
It might not be a bad idea to revisit item G in the context of the signpost that we were talking about today. This is sort of a similar topic for me, just around, like, who can use public space? What does it mean, et cetera?
Did you say G, the July 4th parade?
Yes, but I was trying to tie it around, like, the new posts and stuff in town. It's part of the same broader conversation for me about, like, who is allowed to use what in town? What are the rules, and when is it okay? When is it not okay? It's okay if they're not blended, but I'm seeing them as kind of similar about, like, it's ambiguous about who's allowed to claim that it's in the interest of Hopkinton.
I think, so we have in one of the December meetings, or is it the next meeting, we have both the HCTC and the HRTC jointly coming up to talk about
The parade.
July 4th parade. I think it would make sense, we can incorporate that into that conversation.
Thank you.
So that should be good. I forgot, Elaine, was there a date for that one? Was that December 8th?
One of the two dates, I don't know which one at this point.
Okay, yeah, I can't either. All right, well, either way, that will be, I think we can pull that in there.
To add things, but we had a lot of comments about the lake weeds tonight, so I guess I'd like to understand, is, I think we did vote on it last time, whether to allow it, so I suppose we have a role in that, the Harborside application to the lake.
It's just the Conservation Commission. It doesn't come to the Select Board for a vote.
But it did one time, we had to.
I'm wondering, based on cost, if it's a capital expense? Because they said $55,000, and that should trigger a threshold to CIC, which should send it here.
I think the board approved the menu of options in the plan.
Okay.
Several years ago.
So if we have any role in it, I guess, I would like us to put it in the future agenda, but if we don't have a role, then.
It's in the budget.
It'll be in the, okay, so during the budget discussion.
We'll have the budget constraints to review.
Okay. Financial Management Policy Review, that was on the agenda, but did we skip it, or did I miss?
We did. We, sorry, I think you walked out.
I think I was in the bathroom, yeah.
And we just felt like that was a.
There's too much on the agenda tonight, yeah.
We should all take some more time. Sorry, to, to kind of dig in and prep for that.
Okay.
And, you know, have more time to spend on it, so.
Yep.
Unless you've got something new?
No, nothing.
Brian, anything new, or else we can, for a motion to adjourn and convene an executive session?
I move to convene an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, C3821A, Purpose Six, to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real estate landed 280 C Street because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect to the negotiation of the board. B, pursuant to Mass General Law, C3821A, Purpose Three, to consider strategy with respects to negotiation with the police, fire, dispatch, and DPW unions because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position of the board. To approve executive session minutes from 10:00 to 7:25, to allow Elaine Lazarus and Lance Del Pior to participate in said executive session, and to not convene an open session at the conclusion of the executive session.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, so we move to a roll call. Amy.
Amy Ritter-Bush, yes.
Matt Kizner, yes?
Shador Manon, yes?
Brian?
Brian Herr, yes?
Joe Clark, yes. All right, thank you, everyone.